Thank you, everyone, for coming. So the time is 6:00 PM. Notice is hereby given that the above called meeting of the governing body of the city of Balcony Heights, Texas, will be held on Monday, September 23rd, 2024 at 6:00 PM in the Justice Center located at 3300 Hillcrest Drive, Balcony Heights, San Antonio Tech, um, excuse me, Balcony Heights, Texas, 78201, to consider and act upon any lawful subject which may become, which may come before said meeting, including, among others, the following items to be discussed and acted upon. We're going to call the order and recording of a quorum, and I see that we have a quorum. So let's move to the next item, invocation and pledges of allegiance to the U.S. and Texas flags.
Let me, let me out of states of America and to the Republic, which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Honored Texas flag, allegiance to the Texas. Thank you. So at this time, we're going to go into the public comment period. However, I'd like to make a quick little statement regarding probably prior to this meeting. And the statement which I'm going to make is that I want to let everyone know that I'm going to have pretty much zero tolerance for any disruptions of the meeting. And if you do not ask the chair under parliamentary procedure to be recognized, to be spoken, to speak, and you continue to be disruptive, I will have to ask you to be removed from the chambers. So everyone needs to maintain decorum as we're conducting this meeting. If anybody falls outside of that decorum, I'm going to have to ask them to be removed from the, from the chambers. Thank you very much. So we will go with the citizens who that have filled out to be heard. We have Mr. Rudy Flores and Yvonne Wheeler. 99.5 Kiss and 106.7 The Eagle. Rock and roll up your sleeve, blood drive. Success.
Huge success. Huge success. So guys, I want to thank you all. So Balcony Heights hosted a blood drive, and it was with 99.5 Kiss and 106.7 The Eagle, and it was a rock and roll up your sleeve blood drive. We haven't had one of those in almost 15 years. We were able to have the largest single day blood drive we've had post pandemic. It was amazing. It was a hit. We were going for 250 units, and we went big. And Balcony Heights was able to help us collect. We collected, we registered 327 donors. We stuck 268, with 84 of those being first time donors, and now they're lifetime donors. They're, they're coming to us continually. Those 84 units are going to build up, and, and you have no idea how you guys helped us, and not, not us, the community. I'd like to first start off that the, the drive was August 20, the August 9th, 2024. We collected over 300 plus units. We registered 90 donors to come and be, be part of our research center, and that is, that is a huge plus for us. I do want to let you guys know, two days later, August 11th, we had University and Methodist, they both came in with three traumas, and those are mass, mass casualty traumas. And three donors used 130 units. So because of Balcony Heights, we had the, we had the, the units to give, and we saved all three lives. So thank you for that. Mayor, council, police chief, fire chief, thank you guys for, for, for doing what you guys do and allowing us to come in. We, we thank the Wonderland of Americas and their staff, then the surrounding businesses that actually helped us make it happen. The, the impact, the economic impact for, for having that many donors in, at one time, at one place, the, the businesses were, were so thankful and, and surprised that the donors were staying and eating and drinking. So we'd like to, once we do have our next one coming up, we were looking for August of next year, we'd like to work with those businesses a little bit more, a little closer with Victoria Hernandez, to try to come up with something to, to make our donors stay a little longer and enjoy it and bring some more people in. So we have left you guys some, some of our, our swag, which is our 99 Kiss t-shirts on the table back there with some information. If you see below, that's the logos that we're using. We're going to go ahead and keep that. That was the throwback, and we'd like to see if we can do it again in 2025, 2026, and make this an annual thing. I was talking to a gentleman, Mr. Burton earlier, and he was asking me, why don't we do it twice a year? So it is something we want to throw on the table, and once we sit down and, and have Wonderland of America and, and Balcony Heights there, we, we'd like to look at seeing about doing that as well.
Like to thank you very much, Mr. Flores, and also Ms. Wheeler, for coming to the city and providing your poster and also the t-shirts and everything that you have so graciously given to the council and your time, the community service in providing the blood donor drive is just essential to lives being saved. So thank you again for what you do for our community and others. Anybody want to comment to the? Okay, Mr. Flores, thank you. Okay, and then now we have Mr. Lamar Gillian, 324 Glen Arm, item number nine and 13. You want to wait for that time? You don't have anything right now, correct? Okay, please come on up.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, council members, staff. We've had a rough four months or so in our city, and it's amazing to me from time to time, I'm not going to talk about fruits of the spirit tonight. I, I know you all memorized them after the last time I was up here, but it's amazing to me sometimes how the Lord will speak to us if we stop, be still and listen. And in our church service yesterday, we do a, we sing the Entroid. And one of the verses from the Entroid was, "Be still before the Lord and wait patiently for Him. Fret not yourselves over the One who prospers in His way, over the man who carries out evil devices." And the, one of the scriptures read from the epistle was from James. I won't read the whole thing, but just a couple of lines. "Who is wise and understanding among you? By good conduct let him show his works to the meekness of wisdom. But if you have bitter jealousy and selfish ambition in your hearts, do not boast and be false to the truth. This is not the wisdom that comes down from above, but is earthly, unspiritual, and demonic. For where jealousy and selfish ambition exists, there will be disorder in every vile practice. But the wisdom from above is first pure, then peaceable, gentle, open to reason, full of mercy and good fruits, impartial and sincere. And a harvest of righteousness is sown in peace by those who make peace. But he who gives more grace, therefore it says, 'God opposes the proud, but gives grace to the humble.'" Thank you for your time and attention.
Thank you, sir. So we're going to reserve your item number nine and 13 as well. Mr. Charles White, you have number three, and number four, and number five, and number 10, and number 13, correct? So you don't want to, there's nothing you need to speak right now. Oh, I'm so sorry. So come on up then, citizens to be heard. Sorry about that.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, council. I appreciate you giving me this time. When we change the way we look at things, the things we look at change. Those are incredibly powerful words, and especially being in your positions. It's important to really take any item or issue and really look it over well. I haven't been coming to every meeting, family obligations, but what I've noticed and what I see on the agenda here, it's important that y'all unify more. You may not like each other. But you know what? We all respected each other. You must respect each other and respect the positions. So I wish the best for all of you, and for, it's always for the city, too. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. White, former councilman. Now we have Ms. Suzanne DeLeon.
Thank you, everyone. I appreciate this opportunity. My name is Suzanne DeLeon at 323 Crestview Drive. Last month, when I came before the council, I made a statement that I wanted to share some information that I had received anonymously, but I decided not to play it that night. I chose instead to read the language, but that was my mistake, because I had several people say, what's, what are you talking about? So tonight, I think that it's very important for our residents and staff to hear the words that I'm very sure were accidentally recorded on voicemail. So today, I'm going to play that, be part of this council's record. I'm sure you'll recognize the voices, and after the, the audio, then I will read the words as well.
Hey, what are you doing? Did you look at your agenda? Okay. Well, I, I did some changes in there. I'm telling you, did you see the report on the Gilbert Paralis Weekly Report? Yeah. The, the ship, the rats are starting to run the ship, and they're, they're taking off, which is good. That means we're making progress. So there might be light at the end of the tunnel for you in one.
So that's the end of the recording. So Speaker One, hey, what are you doing? Speaker Two, laying here watching the news. Speaker One, did you look at your agenda? Speaker Two, I've been going on down it. Speaker One, okay, well, I did some changes in there. I'm telling you, did you see the report on the Gilbert Paralis Weekly Report? Speaker Two, I read that part. Speaker One, yeah, the rats are starting to run the ship, man. They are taking off, and that is good. That means we are making progress, and there may be light at the end of the tunnel for you in one end of the recording. So I was just wondering, is this how city leaders should speak about their staff? No, it's not, and it should not be tolerated. Professional leaders would know better than to belittle their staff. I'm proud to say that I served this city for 20 years, honorably and respectfully. Four years on council, 16 as your mayor. During the last campaign, I was very shocked when I heard from several residents that statements were being made about me that I was committing crimes. The most egregious crime that this person stated to others was that I took $20,000 from a developer who built the Balcony's lofts. Residents said they were told that the person that told them said, "I have proof." Where is the proof? I'm waiting for it. It's been months, there's been no proof. I did not and have never taken any amount of money illegally, and the slanderous lie, this hateful rumor spoken by this person has damaged my good name and my reputation and my family's as well. But that's for another day, because it's still all under investigation, and we're still collecting sworn statements. Residents are now learning the truth. Another topic, election fraud is a very serious offense. The adult daughter of one of our long-term residents has voted in Balcony's Heights using her father's address on her voter registration card since 2019. We have proof that she voted in the last election in May, 2024. It's been confirmed that she is a resident of San Antonio and not Balcony's Heights. Therefore, she has voted illegally in our city. There's a business owner in our city who often laments about businesses in Balcony's Heights and how the city is not helping them to prosper, because we have zoning ordinances and policies that he does not approve of. These policies and ordinances were well thought out and are there to improve the landscape of our city and keep it secure from being littered with balloons, banners, flags, and unregulated signage. Business owners, this council, as well as residents and city staff, should want our city to be clean, welcoming, inviting, and not littered with distracting nuisance items such as balloons, banners, flags, and unregulated signage. The business I'm speaking about is currently and has been for years zoned commercial. However, the business owner is a registered voter. He resides at the business location and uses his business address so he can vote in our elections. His property is zoned commercial and not residential. For him to legally live at his business location, he must request a special use permit and had it approved by the Board of Adjustments. As of this date, he has not requested the special use permit. It has been confirmed that he voted illegally in our last election. That is right here. So I just want y'all to know that the Bear County Elections Department has been notified of these voters and possibly a few other people who do not live in our city, yet they vote in our elections. We are going to be very watchful in future elections, and will report any irregularities immediately to the proper authorities. Thank you for my time.
Okay, thank you very much, ma'am, for your comments. Okay, let's move on down the line. What do we have else have here? We've got Roger Givara, attorney at law for Mayor Rodriguez. All items on the agenda. Do you have anything at this point? Okay, thank you, sir. All right, so we are finished now with the citizens to be heard until the items come up for each individual. And we have gone from the public comment period. We're now going for the presentations. Mayoral proclamation for Texas teachers. So we have a proclamation here for Texas teachers. See here which one it is. That will be this one here. So whereas the mayor proclamation for Texas Teacher Day, October 5th, 2024. Whereas the city of Balcony Heights' future strength depends on providing a high-quality education to all students, and whereas teacher quality matters more to student achievement than any other school-related factor. And whereas teachers spend countless hours preparing lesson plans and supporting students. And whereas our city of Balcony Heights teachers deserve our continued support, respect, and admiration. And whereas we proudly lead in demonstrating to our community to recognize and support our teachers in educating the children of this community. And whereas teacher, Pound Teachers Can is a statewide movement supported by more than 150 partnering businesses and organizations committed to elevating the teaching profession and honoring the critical role teachers play in the success of Texas. And now therefore, be it resolved that the city of Balcony Heights City Council joins Pound Teacher Can, Teachers Can, and its partnering entities across Texas in celebrating the inaugural Texas Teachers Day and proclaims October 5th, 2024, to be the City of Balcony Heights Teachers Day. And be it further resolved that the City of Balcony Heights City Council encourages members of the community personally express appreciation to our teachers and display a light blue ribbon outside your homes or businesses the week of October 5th as a symbol of a support for our educators. Adopted the 23rd day of September, 2024 by Mayor Johnny Rodriguez. Okay, we have anybody from the representative of the teachers?
No, we don't, but I could mail it to them.
Could you please tell the audience as to what the, the organization is, please? That contacted us for this? Do you have it before you?
No, I don't have that. It was an email they sent to you.
Right, and I forwarded it to you. Okay.
Mayor.
I can find it.
Mayor Rodriguez. So World Teachers Day, it is actually World Teachers Day, and it is just to recognize the many educators across our world that every day spend time nurturing and guiding our young people to become healthy, responsible adults.
Yeah, there was an organization, and I'm trying to see if I can find it, but that contacted me, and I said, no problem, we'll do that for them, but if it is a national organization, that's even better. So kudos to that, and we've, here it is, Ms. Benavides. So Ms. Benavides is with the statewide teachers initiative, and she is the Charles Butt Foundation. She is Director of Communications, Community Relations for the Charles Butt, which is the HEB owner. Just so everyone knows where that came from. And so when she wrote to me, I told her, of course, we'd adopt and put the proclamation before the city for consideration and adoption. We have that there, so that would give recognition to that entity. Now let's move on to the next one. We have the Fire Prevention Week Proclamation. Whereas the state of Texas is committing to ensuring the safety and security of all those living and visiting our state. And whereas fire is a serious public safety concern both locally and nationally, and homes are the locations where people are at the greatest risk from fire. And whereas home fires kill more than 2,700 people in the United States in 2022, according to the National Fire Protection Association, NFPA. And fire departments in the United States responded to 360,000 home fires, and whereas roughly three out of fire deaths happen in homes with either no smoke alarms or with no working smoke alarms. And whereas working smoke alarms cut the risk of dying and reported home fires almost in half. And whereas smoke alarms sense smoke well before, well before you can, alerting you to the dangers in the event of fire, in which you have as little as two minutes to escape safely. And whereas the city of Balcony Heights residents should install smoke alarms in every sleeping room outside each sleeping area on every level of the home. And whereas the city of Balcony Heights residents will make sure their smoke alarms meet the needs of all their family members, including those with sensory or physical disabilities. And whereas the city of Balcony Heights residents should test smoke alarms at least once a month. Whereas residents who have planned and practiced a home fire escape plan are more prepared and will therefore be more likely to survive a fire. And whereas the Balcony Heights responders are dedicated to reducing the occurrence of home fires and home fire injuries through prevention and protection education. And whereas the city of Balcony Heights residents are responsive to public education measures and are able to take personal steps to increase their safety from fire, especially in their homes. And whereas the 2024 Fire Prevention Week theme, "Smoke Alarms Make Them Work for You", serves to remind us of the importance of having working smoke alarms in the home. Therefore, I, Johnny A. Rodriguez Jr., Mayor of the City of Balcony Heights, do hereby proclaim, October 6th through the 12th, 2024, is Fire Prevention Week throughout the city. And I urge all the people of the city of Balcony Heights to make sure their homes have a working smoke alarm and to support the many public safety initiatives and efforts of the Balcony Heights Fire and Emergency Services. Okay, great, thank you.
Our fire chief is here.
Okay, do we want to, how do you want to present it? What, what did, we do it up here in front? How, how would you like, what's protocol?
In the front.
Okay.
She could take a picture.
Where would you like to sit?
Yeah.
Let's do the consent agenda items, approval of minutes for special meeting of August 5th, 2024, and approval of minutes for regular meeting of August 26th, 2024, and the finance report for the month of August, 2024. Do we have any discussion pertaining to these items on the consent agenda? Anybody need a motion for consideration to approve?
May I be recognized?
Yes, you may, sir. Go right ahead, Councilman Science.
Make a motion to approve the consent agenda items in their entirety.
Do we have a second to Councilman Science's motion?
I'll second that.
Hey, any discussion? All right, let's call for the vote. Councilman Valverde?
Hey.
Councilman Science?
Yeah.
Councilman LaSia?
Yeah.
Councilman Sellers?
Yeah.
Councilman Burton?
Yeah.
We have unanimously 5-0. Motion carries. Okay. So now let's move it down to the next item on the agenda. We will now move on to item number one. The city council will conduct a public hearing on the application submitted by Robert Espinoza for the property located at 1131 Babcock to change the zoning from 01 Low Rise Office to MXD Mixed Use. The time is 6:26 PM, and we will now conduct a public hearing. The appropriate department, come on up and provide us with the information.
Evening. On September 17th, 2024, property owner Robert Espinoza requested an amendment to change his current property zoning located at 1131 Babcock Road from 01 Low Rise Office to MXD Mixed Use District, which on that date, Planning and Zoning Commission recommended the approval of this amendment. So if you have, I believe you have the information and the documents in your packet. Mr. Espinoza was not able to make it this evening. If you guys have any questions for me that I can answer.
Do you have any questions by any council members?
It's still the public hearing.
It's still a public hearing. We'll do that.
Okay.
Oh, there's no questions right now.
Okay.
Okay, so then, can we go ahead and close public hearing? Is there anyone from staff need to? And in the public, and you have any comments or input pertaining to this public hearing on this application? Going once, twice, third? Okay, let's go ahead and pub, close the public hearing at 6:27 PM. And now we will go to item number two. Discussion and action regarding Planning and Zoning Commission's recommendation on the request submitted by Robert Espinoza for property located 1131 Babcock to change the zoning from 01 Low Rise Office to MXD Mixed Use. Okay, so now we'll open it up. Do we have a motion on the floor from any council member?
Motion to approve, Mayor.
Okay. Councilman Valverde has made a motion to approve.
I'll second.
Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Someone signs seconds that motion? Now let's call for discussion. Are there any, is there any discussion to this item? Councilman LaSia?
I attended the, the hearing for this particular item. The only question I have, it's a, it's a two-unit building he's asked to move forward to do in one. Do we have a timeframe for the second one, or is that something that doesn't get determined?
He's only going to utilize the two upstairs, because they have the infrastructure already in place for those apartments and the bottom two units he'll utilize as office space.
Okay, just for the top two.
It's just for the top two, yes.
Thank you.
Any other questions to staff or any, any other inquiries? Councilman Burton?
This is actually more restricting for him, isn't it? Because he's moving from?
It actually is, yes, sir. He's going to have more restrictions in that zoning.
Any other questions? Okay, so let's go ahead and call for a vote. Councilman Valverde?
Yeah.
Councilman Science?
Yeah.
Councilman LaSia?
Yeah.
Councilman Sellers?
Yeah.
Councilman Burton?
Yeah.
Okay, motion carries, 5-0. We can notify Mr. Espinoza, his permit was You can notify Mr. Espinoza, his permit was issued. His application was approved. City Council will conduct a public hearing on the proposed annual operating budget fiscal year 2024, 2025, item number three. So here we do have some members that want to speak. So let's go ahead and call for a motion. Excuse me, that's a public hearing, I'm sorry, I misread it. So we'll conduct a public hearing on the proposed, so the time is 6:30 PM. So we will open up the public hearing on this. Do we have any comments from the citizens? Regarding the public hearing of the annual operating budget for the fiscal year 2024, 2025? Any input from anybody? Councilman White, I mean a former Councilman White?
Greetings, Council. Mayor. I believe it's really important to maintain the dispatch in the city. We're going to, if we subbed it out and then you keep two staff to help with impound. Maybe you need another $50,000 or so, I'm not sure. I was hoping we would, would have had more budget meetings during the past month, but nonetheless. The business owners really count on the police department. I mean, their responses are probably more up there than anywhere else, maybe the apartments. But especially during peak hours, breakfast, lunch, dinner. Things get crowded with our own dispatch. I feel more comfortable that the community will be better served. And the dispatchers, when they get to know an officer or see that there's a personal relationship. And there's a caring. I don't know if the new system, I know the old system had the ability to locate a police officer where he's at. I don't know if that was ever in place or not, but. So the dispatch had an idea where all the officers were at any given time. So if you had a call over here, you could get the closest police officer to them. I don't know if that stayed in effect or not. It did, which is a really, I hope that's going to be with the new system too. But I thank you for your time.
Thank you. Mr. White, thank you very much. Okay, so now let's move on over to, is there any other comments from the community in the public hearing? Any other comments? Okay, so then we will now close the public hearing on the proposed annual budget. And the time is 6:33 PM. Now we'll have a item number four. City Council will conduct a public hearing regarding the 2024 Ad-Larm Tax Rate. So that, that meeting now is going to be opened up at 6:33 PM, note the time. Do we have any comments pertaining to the Ad-Larm Tax Rate? And I think, Mr. Gillian, did you want to, did you have it on here? Let me make sure I'm correct. Okay, I want to make sure that wasn't you. It was number four, Ad-Larm Tax Rate? Yes, sir, you have it here as, oh, I'm sorry, that was Mr. White. Yeah, I bet you confused with him. Okay. Let's make sure we get this correct. You've got number nine and number 13, is that correct? Okay. All right, so do we have any comments pertaining to the Ad-Larm Tax Rate? Any citizen comment? Okay, so then we will now close that hearing. Or do we have more comment? Mr. Charles White, go ahead, sir.
I really didn't get a chance to see what y'all had proposed or current and everything else. But if I'm a business owner. What I look for is lower taxation, whereas y'all were looking at how to keep everything rolling. So I'm going to have to trust your decision. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Councilman Burton?
For anybody who's interested, there's a packet over there on the, on the stand for the, for the budget, just for anybody interested.
Do we have any other comments? Am I allowed to comment to this counselor? Frank, Mr. Burden, can I make a comment regarding, provide input or? Okay, okay, sounds good. All right, so then we, we will now close the public hearing regarding the Ad-Larm Tax Rate for 2024 at 6:35 PM. Okay, now we have considering action to adopt an ordinance approving the budget for fiscal year beginning October 1st, 2024. And ending September 30th, 2025, and other matters in connection therewith. Mr. Messick?
Well, good evening, Mayor and Council. As I put the slides together, I had put the slides together to go in conjunction with the public hearings. Of course, they've been closed, but the slides will still work for what we need to present tonight. So to begin with, we're, we're going to, we're going to use the same slide deck as you're used to, but we're going to break it up a little bit. The first one was more in gear towards the, the first public hearing. And it talks about the budget that we're adopting tonight. And so this portion.
Time may interrupt you slightly, please. Frank, aren't we supposed to call a vote for this and then have discussion? Or he can, he can go ahead and do that? Okay, just wanted to make sure we're in the proper format. Great, thank you.
For the budget portion, we'll be looking at what you see up here. And then that last one's grayed out, we'll, we'll get to that when we get to the, to the tax portion of it. So your overview, what you need to know. It's pretty much here on the slide. The city's biggest fund is the general fund. And it is balanced with this proposed budget. The budget does reflect full funding for dispatch services for the entire fiscal year. The tax rate remains unchanged from what it is this year, and that's .604 or $100 evaluation. Now, the last time we got together, we had frozen, we had said that we were going to have to freeze two police positions. Since then, we've tweaked it a little bit. And so we're able to, with this budget, return one of the, the police corporal positions back to the street. And so now we only have one upstairs sergeant position that's frozen with this budget. And so all this came about with our, with the savings that you see there and. Total budget again, the general fund is your biggest portion, your biggest concern of your budget. And that's where most of your operations take place. That is balanced. Overall, the budget reflects revenues over expenses of minus $789,000. So the total budget is running a deficit overall. And that's because we have deficit spending in four funds, and we'll look at those here in a minute. Were your total budget revenues? It's a decrease of $1.7 million or 16% over FY24 estimated collections. This due primarily to the loss of the red light cameras program, about $700,000 revenue lost there. A decrease in capital fund revenues, the capital fund fluctuates every year. So there's a decrease in revenues this year. It might be an excess of revenues next year, but. And a decrease in the way we capture CDBG funds. Last year, we, we captured $425,000 of revenue. We expect to capture revenues again this year, however, we won't recognize them until we're actually sure of them. Once the county has approved it and we actually collect them, we'll come back and amend the budget for that. Your total budget expenses, 9.6 million. Total budget expenses decreased $2.8 million over what was budgeted in FY24. Primarily due to decreased cost in the red light cameras program. The way we recognize the, the grant expenses. General fund decreases and of course decreases in payroll. Speaking of payroll. And nothing's changed since the last workshop. We did move three police positions from the traffic safety fund into the general fund this year. So 81% of payroll costs are now in the general fund versus 76% last year, and thus the increase. Again, there is, the one frozen police corporal position was returned in this budget. And we still maintain the freeze on the sergeant's position. Workers' comp increased 10% this year, healthcare costs increased 6%, lower than what we had thought. And TMRS increased 5%. This budget does scheduled merit increases for all employees and a 2.7% COLA for all employees. That was based on estimates from SSA over the summer. They're trending downwards. If they had to do a COLA today, it would be 2.5, and so there's a potential there for cost savings. There is some changes in, in the way that we are calculating, or can you go back one more, Lisa? Thank you. So in the general fund, all the, this year, all the police positions were included into the general fund. We didn't take a portion of it, 45% of those costs, and we moved them down into the crime control district. Again, it's, it's what can be absorbed in that, in that fund. And so we break it up that way. Administrative positions of, where you're administrative department, department 410. 80% of those costs are captured in the general fund. And 20% of, of those expenses are moved into the hotel fund to absorb that. Personnel costs by function, overall personnel cost, five, just under 5.4 million this year. Public safety, police, fire and dispatch record 77% of total payroll expenses. Total debt, nothing's changed here. Again, just to point out, the WODA partnership debt is not tax back yet. It is not a portion of your INS, it does not affect your tax rate. The Series 2021 Fire Truck will be finished paying that off in 2026. Roughly $116,000 a year for that. The Series 2020 Vivian Street Tax Note will be paid off next fiscal year. Freeing up about 75,000 for that. And that's good because we're going into the Hillcrest decision-making time of the year. And so this was originally proposed to show that there is a thought process in how we were approaching Hillcrest at the time. As far as funding that project. Obviously, as one debt falls off, we, we accrue more to replace it for about the same cost. And so 80,000 would replace 74,000. And ultimately, up to 240,000 would replace the 116,000. But that's down the road, we have time to look at that, and I'm going to try to get our, the guy who does our bonds for us, I'm going to try to get him in front of council in October to explain the timing of this. And when we have to call for an election and what your options are with Hillcrest. So that's, that's coming up down the road.
Yes, Councilman Burton? Go ahead.
So when Vivian falls off, does, does Pleasant come on? I mean, did we, we already paid off Pleasant already?
Yes, sir, Pleasant's been done, yes, sir. We're, look. For street projects, we're working on Crestview, but that's not any tax.
Pleasant was done after Vivian, so that, that's, that's.
Yes, sir, yeah, that's done and paid for.
Pleasant was already paid for.
Yes, sir. And it wasn't on a tax, Vivian was, and so we're still paying that off.
Yeah, thank you.
Were your general fund, it's the city's largest fund, and the priority, of course, is always to balance the general fund. General fund revenues, 5.6 million dollars. General fund revenues, 5.6 million dollars, of course, that matches the expenses the fund has balanced. Total general fund revenues increased nearly $150,000 or 2.7% over what was budgeted last year. And again, taxes make up 73% of general fund revenues and all that other stuff makes up the remaining 27%. General fund expenses, obviously same as the revenues, 5.6 million, as the fund is balanced. Personnel costs are under 4.4 million in the general fund. And are the, are the fund's largest expense category. Nearly 72% of personnel costs are for public safety, which would be police, fire and dispatch. Okay, the capital fund, again, the capital fund is dependent on transfers in from other funds. What happens in the capital fund, it, this is its own segregated budget. It does not affect what happens in the general fund. The tax rate that we're passing does not affect what happens in the capital fund. It's got its own fund balance, its own revenues and expenses. So again, it, it doesn't affect your tax rate. You're right there, okay. So the capital fund expenses for this year, the bulk of it, as it is every year, is for street projects, $504,000. Mostly for Crestview too. We do have some equipment purchases this year of 160,000. And that would be, well, you can see what it's there for. We will point out that for the public works pickup truck, it, it is included in this. And whether we buy it or not, it's included, it's segregated out anyway. After talking with Mr. Lara last month, he's under the impression the pickup truck will, will be fine again to go another year. But if it doesn't, it's in the budget, it's been approved. That way, we're going to have to come back with another special meeting or bring it up on a council. It's, it's there for us to purchase. But whether we purchase it or not, like I said, none of this affects your general funds. I just wanted to make sure everybody understood that. The capital fund fluctuates every year. This year, we do have a slight excess of revenues over expenses, and that's good. Ultimately, I'd like to see that fund balance grow to $2 million with the Hillcrest, the street project coming up. I would like to point out the, the fund balance, okay, and what that means. Because I know there was some concern last time about, or the question was asked, why, why are we spending it all? Why do we have to spend everything? So I, I kind of thought, well, maybe I'm not doing a good job of explaining fund balance. And so I wanted to take a second to just look at the fund balance. And you see, it's a really healthy amount, that 1.7 million, 1.8 million. And that's money that hasn't been, that's money that has been saved over the years. From not spending all the expenses and maybe capturing even more revenues than we had budgeted. And so whenever you see a large fund balance, that is in essence, prove that we're not spending it all. We are banking it as needed down the road, okay? Special revenue funds, we have 16 special revenue funds, and these are for fenced purposes. We do have deficit spending in four of our special revenue funds this year. Three of them are planned. So for Economic Development Corporation, of course, that's not planned, we're just not getting the partnership revenues that we had hoped for. And so that's causing your deficit there. Your Economic Incentive Fund, $205,000, this is planned deficit spending. We're using some of the revenue, or we're using all the revenue this year that was going into that fund. And we're moving that into the general fund to help balance that. And that was the CPS franchise fee, a portion that was going through the Economic Incentive Fund. Now it goes back into the general fund to help balance that. And we're also transferring out $200,000 this year into the capital fund from this fund. Again, to help pay for our street projects. The Streets Fund, in, in years past, we would transfer money out of the general fund into the Streets Fund. And as a healthy fund balance, and we needed the money last year and again this year for balancing the general fund. And so that reflects deficit spending as well. And likewise, we're also transferring $100,000 out of it into the capital fund. And a federal forfeiture fund is planned deficit spending to close out the, just to simply close out the fund as we don't participate in that program anymore. And again, your Economic Development Corporation, a good, healthy fund balance, that's not cash or anything. That's just the investment of, of the, of WODA that we, that we bought into. And so with no revenues coming in each year, obviously that fund balance will continue to go down. So no revenues are recorded for next year. Expenses, primarily the loan payment of $400,000. We do budget another $38,000 that we don't intend to use, but nevertheless, it's there if need be. Your Economic Incentive Fund, this is one where we're transferring out $200,000 into the capital fund. We do have $5,000 down for professional services, which I don't think we'll use. But a pretty good, healthy fund. But a pretty good, healthy fund balance for, for that, as you can see, starting out at four-hundred-and-sixty-two thousand, money that wasn't used, we didn't spend it all. And your streets fund, Fund fourteen. Pretty good beginning fund balance and we're spending that down. And again, it's a hundred thousand dollars transferring out into the, into the capital fund. And we do have forty-two thousand dollars of expenses recorded for other minor street repairs and things that may crop up. But, and I don't think we'll spend all of that either. Your federal forfeiture fund, this is the one we're closing out, we'll, we'll spend the rest of that fund balance and close that fund out. For your. I'm sorry, question? Yes, sir. Yeah, all these are fenced to a degree. And of course, we just throw this up there because this is the program that's going away this year. We will ultimately spend down all of the fund balances and this will get closed fund next year. Approximate loss of about four-hundred-and-fifty thousand dollars each year, a little less this year because the program closed in May. But typically about four-hundred-and-fifty thousand dollars, which funded three police positions and paid the city's street lights bill. And all of this was moved into the general fund this year or FY twenty-five. About twenty-five, size crime control and prevention district fund is balanced as well, pretty healthy fund balance there. And as we said earlier, some of the, or forty-five percent of police costs that are shared in the general fund also go down into this fund to fill that out. Same for your hotel occupancy tax fund, Fund twenty. Really healthy fund balance here, money not being spent over the years. Revenues equal expenses and again, twenty percent of the administrative costs or salary costs were moved into this fund to fill that out and balance. Proprietary funds are our sewer and stormwater and for our sewer fund, Fund fifty-six. Very healthy fund balance for our sewer fund, our sewer projects cost a lot of money, so we need to have a healthy balance there. Revenues equal expenses, so this fund is balanced, we are transferring two-hundred-and-fifty thousand dollars out. And that, that's included in your expense lines, it's two-hundred-and-fifty thousand out for street projects. Stormwater, same here, balanced fund, pretty good fund balance. And this one's transferring seventy-five thousand dollars out to the capital fund and there's five hundred dollars left for expenses that I doubt we'll record any expense to. Okay, so in summary. So like I said initially, I had organized this for the public hearing, so that at this point I was going to end public hearing number one. But this is the summary of what we just talked about as far as the budget is concerned. And again, the city's general fund is balanced. It does reflect full funding for dispatch services for the entire fiscal year, our tax rate remains unchanged. With the decreases in payroll and other tweaks that we made, we were able to return the police corporal position back to the streets. Do you want to do questions now or just continue trudging through the tax?
We can ask questions now, I think, Mr. Sellers? Yeah.
Yeah.
Because we had the public hearing on the tax rate, I think that's the next time we hear. Yeah, number seven.
Yeah, so budget questions now.
We can take any budget questions right now? Okay, so let's open up the floor for questions, Councilman Sellers.
Yes, I have a question, starting on page nine. Perhaps I'm just not familiar with it, but I just want to know why we're transferring funds from one to another? Are we done with that or?
Is this the slide you're referring?
Why are we doing that?
Yes, sir, is that the slide you're referencing? I want to make sure we're on the same slide.
That deficit spending, page nine. Where it starts, you know, you're, you're transferring a hundred K here and, you know, whatever.
Yes, sir. Yeah.
I get it.
All these funds.
We're, we're short in one fund, we steal it out of another, that's robbing Peter to pay Paul, is that what we're doing?
Yes and no. That's a good, that's a good analogy. Certainly that shell game is played quite a bit. But no, what we're doing is, is we're feeding the capital fund, right? Because we know we have ongoing street projects with Crestview. We're starting up too, we've got, we're on the hook for phase three as well. And we know that we have a big debt coming up with Hillcrest and so.
Transferring, is this a common occurrence?
Oh, yes, sir. Yeah, yeah, absolutely.
And it's because we're not funding that enough?
No, it, it's because we transfer funds as they're available to the capital fund to build up a balance for these things. And so, yeah, but yes, there is no, there is no set fund transfer into the capital fund every year, except for the sweep fund, which we do every year. But that's, that's kind of up in here, you don't know how much you're going to get every year. And so these other funds transfer it so that we can afford the street projects.
My second question on page fourteen, on the sewage. Sewer fund. It's Fund fifty-six, fifty-seven, whatever you want to call it.
Yes, sir.
We'd like for you to explain to me. Construction, operations and maintenance of city sewer system. What does that entail? What's?
Just transporting it all downhill, so you have to have the infrastructure for that.
Our drainage ditches that run through?
And that would be stormwater, that would be the next one, yes, sir.
So that's on a different.
Yes, sir.
Category?
Yes, sir.
The fifty-seven stormwater. And again, the same question, I mean, the construction, operation and maintenance. I don't see any construction, operation or maintenance in stormwater at all. But there's water continually running down from somebody's business. Carries millions of mosquitoes and trash and debris. The concrete walls are caving in in some areas. But I don't see any of this construction, operations and maintenance being done to stormwater. So this, this, this fund is supposed to support that or pay for that?
Yes, sir.
Why isn't that being done?
As, as I know about it, then I budget for it, I wasn't aware of anything, but that would be the appropriate fund, yes, sir, to use for that.
All right, thank you, I have no more questions.
Thank you.
Do we have any other questions from any council member, Councilman Burton?
I don't know if this is appropriate time, but I know it's further down on the, on the agenda. But it pertains to the budget, the investment pool of the five-hundred-thousand-dollar transfer.
This budget now.
Oh, it's for, that's for twenty-twenty?
Yes, sir. Twenty-four.
I'll, I'll deal with that.
Yes, sir.
Any other questions from council?
That, I do.
Councilman Siller?
On the, is there a magic number or what would it take to freeze, unfreeze the secondary police officer position?
To unfreeze a sergeant's position, city cost is roughly a hundred thousand dollars. And so increasing revenues, decreasing expenses elsewhere. But.
How would we, how would we be able to track that or at what point would we be able to say we can release that, that position?
Yeah, it really depends on what revenues do. We always, you know, conservatively guesstimate the revenues. If they come in hot and heavy, then we could unfreeze it, we could entertain that. Or, I mean, you, you also have the sweep amount at the end of the year, you could say, hey, you know what? Instead of sending it all through the capital fund and paving streets, let's go ahead and put the police sergeant back. And so there's options there, but we'll know more after the audit around springtime.
That, that would be a matter that we can bring back before the council.
Yes, sir.
The audit.
Absolutely.
And then just for clarification, that position is just frozen, not eliminated?
That is correct, yes, sir.
Thank you.
Anybody else? Councilman Burton again?
So again, dispatch is funded through twenty-twenty-five or?
Yes, sir, it is fully funded for the next fiscal year.
Excellent, thank you.
Anyone else? Yes, Councilman Sellers?
Page three, you have six-hundred-and-thirty-five thousand dollars decreased from fines from red light cameras. And a total budget decrease of two-point-eight million, that's over three million that we're, we've lost due to red light cameras. Is that true?
Let me make sure I'm on the same slide with you, is that?
Total budget revenues?
Total budget revenues. The next one, Lisa, I believe, is this the slide you're looking at, sir?
Page three is what I have. Line revenue decreased six-hundred-and-thirty-five thousand dollars and the next slide down, we lost two-point-eight million. That's over three million dollars that we've lost from red light camera?
No, so we're looking at total budget, so that's.
Putting that to me.
Yeah, so what we're looking.
You have to add those two.
So what we're looking at here is total budget and it's going to consider all of your funds. So there's changes up and down in all of them. And so what we're showing here on, is the overall decrease. So some went up, some went down. Overall, your, your red light cameras program, you lost about four-hundred-and-fifty thousand dollars of revenue. And, well, in any good year, you'd have a million dollars of expenses too. And a lot of that goes to the state, a lot of it goes to the vendors and so. So overall, I mean, if you're looking at total program of what we're, what we lost there, we lost a million dollars of revenue. Four-hundred-and-fifty thousand of it was useful to us for the police positions in the city lights. But that revenue went away, so that looks like a million dollar loss. The same for the expense side, so you're seeing a big expense decrease, which is good, you always want to see expenses go down. But likewise, you're, you're missing the revenue as well. I don't know if I explained that or?
Well, thank you, I mean, it clarified it, you know, I was adding the two together.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Seems like that would be the common thing to do. We lost the tickets and we lost the red light cam.
Yeah, it's kind of confusing because it's all blended into the overall. Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
Right. On the red light cameras. Oh, sorry.
That's all right.
Was, was that position staffed by a sergeant?
Which, there, there was three positions, three police officers, two patrols and one corporal. The administrator position, although he was a cop, he was an administrative position, but he was an officer.
The one that reviewed the, was that a sergeant or was that just an officer? Just an officer, okay. Thank you.
Anyone else? Okay, I do have a few comments I want to ask about the budget. So back when we first were looking at the budget, we went through three different budget hearings. And just correct me if I'm wrong here. And I had asked questions regarding the total budget revenues at that time was eight million, eight, seven, one, six, sixty. And we had total budget expenses of nine million, six, sixty, six, oh, eight. And the reason I had asked is why are we spending more than what we're bringing in? That was number one. Number two, one, where you just right now mentioned that we're not spending all the funds, we have one-point-seven million in a fund. It has to be by city rule because we have to maintain a reserve. Okay, so that's not something that really the budget is based on. We have to keep that reserve, to my understanding, as a safety reserve for the city. At least three months, three to five months reserves on hand. So then the statement is not really true because I keep going back to we are spending more than what we're receiving in according to this information you gave us. And so that was my concern all along is how the city is operating. If, and I, I use the example, if it brings in a million, well, we spend a million, three. And it just doesn't make any sense when your revenues are coming in at eight million, six, sixty, six, oh, eight. And then I didn't hear anything about until just right now about the WODA. The WODA is really the true problem that we were facing because along with the cameras, and I think that that keeps being overlooked. Or it's not being addressed, is the WODA is not receiving any revenues whatsoever for the city. And the city was put on the hook for the obligation of that five-point-five million dollar loan. So that is a forty thousand dollar or so payment every month that the city is on the hook. To pay out its general operating budget, which it did not account for back when the original deal was made. So that is a huge, huge impact that's having on our, on our city budget because it amounts to about, I think, close to four-hundred thousand dollars a year. That is tapping into the resources of the general operating budget. And since we have no money coming out to make that payment every month, that's where in truth is one of the biggest stress factors that the budget is facing. Along with the loss of the five-hundred thousand dollars in revenue of the cameras. So we need to make sure we continue to acknowledge that and work towards that. And that's why I had, you know, made a strong argument about not outsourcing the dispatch. Of turning our dispatch into a revenue source and getting this new dispatch equipment and all the upgrades. So that we can start possibly leasing out our dispatch services for what right now is proposed to be used in the form of a two-hundred-and-twenty-five, two-hundred-and-fifty thousand dollar investment into outsourcing. On a four-hundred-and-twenty-seven thousand dollar commitment that we have to our dispatch employees. That's roughly what it costs us to run our dispatch services, somewhere in the area between four-hundred-and-twenty to twenty-seven, from my understanding. Where I had a little bit of confusion. And I would hope if you can help clarify this from Mr. Messick. Is that, how is it that you could make, and I asked this in the last budget section because to my recollection, and please, my colleagues, correct me if I'm incorrect on this. But we never voted for the outsourcing of dispatch as a, it was discussed as a possible option. It was discussed as, we will table it for discussion later. But we never took an official vote to adopt it. And so the next thing I see on our overview is that the city's general fund is balanced. But we didn't balance the budget because we haven't gone through the third meeting, which even in the meeting before this, we never adopted a budget. We didn't even make any changes to the budget that the council made, no changes whatsoever to the budget. To either go up or down on it, either way, there were no discussion and there was no vote for that. So my question to you is, how do we have a general fund that's balanced? And then it, the budget reflects full funding of dispatch services for now. But the proposed tax rate is at sixty percent. So how does that work if you can explain to me so I have a better understanding as to when the outsourcing of the dispatch is going to take place?
Okay, so last fiscal year, it was voted, the council, that we would pursue outsourcing dispatch. And staff has continued to do so during.
Before the, excuse me, this is before the new council came in or the, the members of the new administration, correct? That was in twenty-three or twenty-four?
Last budget cycle.
Twenty-four, yes.
And so, and when we had our budget workshops, we were not given any change of direction as to stop doing that.
Okay.
And so we continue to do so now and we are continuing to explore the option. But what we were hearing during the budget workshop is that a lot of people wanted to keep dispatch and so it's included in the budget.
Correct.
And, and so now prior to when we were going to outsource it, we were going to realize a savings around two-hundred thousand dollars.
Right.
And, and from that, we were, we were going to unfreeze both of the police positions. But now that we're keeping dispatch, we're still, we did well to find some other money, but that's why we're freezing the one position. And so the general fund is balanced with the inclusion of dispatch.
So that means that we're not outsourcing dispatch for this year of twenty-four, twenty-five?
Let me say it again for everybody, dispatch is fully funded for fiscal year twenty-twenty-five for the entire year.
You can understand the confusion because in the first, in the, in the third budget workshop, the one right before this one. The overview says the city's general fund is balanced. This budget reflects outsourcing of dispatch services.
That was correct, and it is correct now, it was correct then because we were freezing positions, it is correct now because we're only freezing one position. So both statements are correct. And the budget, of course, evolves. We don't vote at, at the end of every budget workshop to adopt the budget, it's just discussion, this is the final vote. And so naturally, it's a living document that's going to evolve over the summer.
Okay, so now let me, let me direct your attention to the newsletter that's soon to be published, which also added to confusion for me. Because I didn't understand. which also added to confusion for me because I didn't understand how is it that you're able to put something in a newsletter that's going to be published for the September twenty-third council meeting when we haven't even had the council meeting yet? And here it says that that we took action on the five hundred remaining credit balance, different actions that have not been voted on yet. But yet it's in the newsletter. And so I was confused. I was like, okay, I don't understand. Is this something that's already been planned and already know what the vote's going to be taking on it? And so it's put into the newsletter?
Thank you. So and when that is that newsletter that you are looking at is a proof and that was sent to you as a proof only.
Right.
With a caveat that nothing would be finalized until after the September twenty-third, twenty twenty-four meeting to make sure that what was texted in there would be accurate. I take that information from the agenda items that we have and fill the space so that I I know how much space I have in the newsletter for other content. I will modify it once all of the votes are taken, update the newsletter before it goes to be published.
Okay, and that's where I got confused because I was looking at it. I thought, okay, we haven't even voted on any of this.
Correct.
And it's in the newsletter already as a vote. It's already been taken.
Yes, and that was just note that was noted in the email when you were sent the proof that it was just approved, just to review.
Okay. And then also here on the newsletter from Councilman Sines. He says, as you know, the city faces significant budget a budget challenge. Our budget was two hundred thousand. City Council Mayor had some difficult decisions to make to pose the budget deficit. And he said he wanted to explore the option of sourcing the dispatch that would result on a approximately two hundred and fifty with little or no impact to emergency services response. And so again, I was just a little confused because I was like, okay, did we adopt the outsourcing of dispatch to my knowledge? And that's why I wanted to ask and just get it clarified, just from my own understanding.
May I be recognized?
Yeah, yes, go right ahead, Councilman.
Again, that's just a draft and it's based on the previous budget meeting that we had where at the beginning, Mr. Messick had said that he had drafted the the budget based on the the request that city council had made to draft a a proposed budget with the with the condition that we outsource dispatch. What would that look like? So he addressed that. But at the end of that, he said that dispatch would be fully funded because there is no way to outsource dispatch before October first. So he fully funded dispatch for the year by freezing two police officers' positions, that sergeant and that corporal. That's how the budget was balanced at the end of the last meeting, which he clearly stated. Since then, he has been able to unfreeze that corporal position and leave that sergeant position frozen. And that's how the the budget is balanced right now.
Okay.
In fully funding dispatch for the.
And that information was provided to us?
It was provided during the budget meeting.
In the budget hearing, this last one that we had?
Yes, September third.
Do you remember that any council members, anybody else might remember that discussion? I don't.
That's on the recording.
Right, but I mean, do we? I just just questioning because of the fact that it just confused me. And there was statements in there like unfortunately, Mayor Rodriguez would not even entertain the idea of outsourcing our dispatch department, which I've got no problem. That's a true statement.
Yeah, so it's not it's not an op.
Yeah, and so I was confused. You can see where I should be confused that it's almost like you're saying that we are adopting the 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 idea of outsourcing dispatch.
No, my my statement clearly says we did not outsource dispatch.
I can see now how I I could have got confused with this. So I'm glad I got it clarified. So now the other thing is, is that under the rules, correct me if I'm wrong, this again. Under the actual budgetary rules under section one oh two point zero zero nine and one oh two point zero one oh, are you familiar with that local government code section? As a budget officer, you should, but it's okay if you don't. I'll I'll just tell you what it is. Texas Local Government Code authorizes the governing body to amend the budget. Section one oh two oh oh nine authorizes an emergency expenditure as an amendment to the original budget only in case of grave public necessity to meet an unusual unforeseen condition that could not have been included in the original budget through the use of reasonable diligent thought and attention. And so what I'm wondering is that the transfers that my colleague, Councilman Sellers, asked about. Are they legal to do those kind of transfers without the approval?
Mayor, that's not part of this budget item, this this agenda item.
Well, I'm just asking a question about this budget because I need to know.
Right, but that's part of number nine, not.
Well, no, no, I'm not talking about that transfer specifically, Mr. Sines. I'm referring to in general, any kind of transfers from the budget. And that's what Mr. Sellers brought up. So thank you.
To answer the question, yes, they are legal, in my opinion. And and in our auditor's opinion as well as this budget gets audited.
Yes, sir. We're not amending the budget. When you're allowed to make transfers when adopting a new budget.
Okay.
If we were to make changes next month, trying to transfer dollars.
Okay.
That's where that provision would come into play.
Okay.
But the transfers being made to adopt a new budget are not considered budget amendments.
Okay. All right, but if the transfers are made prior to the budget process throughout the years, there's transfers being made to an existing adopted budget without the approval of the city council or the knowledge of the city council. Seems to be that they wouldn't be in violation of the budget process.
I'm.
These these are not unknown to council mayor that they're in their proposed budget. And if it's approved, then we will make them.
Make sure I clarify myself. A budget that's already been adopted, let's take the twenty twenty-four budget that was adopted in twenty-three, twenty-four. You adopt, the council adopts that budget as its operating balance budget. Okay. Once it formulates the decision that that is the operating budget. Then it's to my understanding that no changes to that budget needs to be made unless it meets the section under the one oh two and oh nine.
At the end, at the end of a budget, at the end of a budget, any excess revenues will be placed in the new budget, in the draft budget for the following year. And the council decides where those dollars are going to be. Mr. Messick is basically saying where those transfers from last year's budgets, excess dollars are going to be moved into this year's budget. That is not considered a budget amendment.
Okay, so that's why I'm trying to get clear. I still am not clear. So you can do it during a budget that's already been adopted without council approval? You can move money around?
This is this is council.
No, 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 no.
He's not transferred the dollars yet. He's not transferred the dollars yet. The dollars have not been transferred until you approve this budget.
No, no, but we're not talking about this budget.
Yes, we are.
I'm referring to a scenario
No, sir.
Of the past budget, the twenty-four budget, okay?
Correct.
It's already been adopted.
Correct.
Yep, we'll get with you in just a minute.
Yes, sir.
It's already been adopted. So if the budget's been adopted, my question is just at during that time, without going to this budget process and going to the new budget process. We're talking about a budget that's already been adopted.
That's correct.
Can it be, can monies be transferred from accounts to other accounts and moved around without the approval of the city council? That's my question, not this budget cycle.
See, that's where you're mistaken. That's where you're mistaken, Mayor. That's where you're mistaken.
Okay.
Any excess revenues, we're about to end this budget year. Your finance director is saying, Alan, September thirtieth, you're going to have these excess revenues. We need to know where to put them. So in the twenty twenty-five draft budget is where he's telling you those dollars are going to be moved into. You're closing twenty twenty-four with some excess dollars. By adopting the twenty twenty-five, you're moving those excess dollars into the areas that you want to move them to. There have been no amendments in the twenty twenty-four. But at the end of twenty twenty-four, you have to figure out what you're going to do with those excess revenues. The twenty twenty-five budget answers the question of what you're going to do with those excess revenues by moving into the accounts that the draft budget is proposing.
Is that what you were asking, Mr. Sellers? Is it the present movement of funds from one to another? Or is it the past back? You know, before we came in?
He explained it a lot better than anybody else.
Okay.
It's access money that were funding other bank accounts.
And I understand that part. I guess the part that I was just confused about is throughout the cycle, when before you're in adopting a new budget. If you're moving money around and you're as he put it, stealing Peter to pay Paul, is that legal to do that in the budget? And you're saying it is.
It to a degree, if I might add, with special revenue funds, they are fenced. For example, I can't use crime control money to pave a street with. I can't use the PEG fund and child safety fund, any of that stuff. Debt service fund, I can't use, we can't do that. But there are certain things, such as sewer and stormwater, which you can. Economic incentive fund, you can streets because ultimately they are components of the general fund anyway. At the end of the year, they all get rolled up into the general fund. So you could use those.
But well, I'm glad I got that clarified. Councilman Sines, you had a question? Well, I appreciate that clarification. That gives me a good understanding.
Yeah.
Councilman Lysia?
Yeah, and and just to, because I know this created some 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 confusion. When we go through our documents, we will see that they're stamped sealed, approved on this date. But that's part of the draft system. So if during during the process during the rest of the year, we will have documents that we're voting on. Before we voted, the the language is already in there, but that's part of the standard operating procedure that that works. So if we see something that you say, well, we haven't voted on it, it's part of the procedure. And then once the the election is done, once we approve it, then the the document changes.
Okay.
But it's so that way we don't we don't have the the same confusion with different items.
Okay, great.
And and that's a good, that's a good point because that's what we're going to do after the audit and we know our what the increase is in our general fund. What our fund balance goes up to over maybe five months, maybe six months. And then we will come back with an amendment to the budget saying we would like to take so much of this and transfer it over because that's not in the budget right now. Because we don't know the amount.
Since May, I just didn't see any of those amendments, so I didn't know.
There wasn't any.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying. I thought it'd be a legitimate question to ask. I get a better understanding.
And it's always fluid. Right?
Of course, yes. In fact, we we budget for these, but if the revenues don't come into the fund, obviously, we can't transfer all that money in. I'm not just going to say we're stuck with that amount. If we can only put half of it in, then we'll let you know and only put half of it in.
Thank you so much for that explanation, Councilman Sellers.
If everybody's through, I'd like to make a motion to approve.
Okay, so we have a motion on the floor?
Are we doing that now?
That's right, we're not in public hearing.
No, no, this is actually, this is, this is a motion to approve the budget.
Okay, may I pull up a slide for that? Because we we have it all.
Yeah, he has an actual language that you want to you adopt.
Yeah. Again, I thought we were going to hit the public hearings and then go into.
The public hearings are even completed.
I just want to make sure I have the slide on.
We have a motion on the floor from Councilman Sellers. Do we have a second to his motion?
We need to use the exact language on this slide.
Point of order, and guess what is it? Okay. So we want to use this language.
Keep going, keep going, keep going, keep going.
Mayor? If I may?
Yes, you can. You still have the floor.
I make a motion to adopt the annual budget of the city of Valconite Heights for the fiscal year beginning October the first, two thousand and twenty-four, and ending September thirtieth, two thousand and twenty-five.
Okay, do we have a second to that motion?
I'll second.
Okay, so the motion is he makes a motion to adopt the annual budget of the city of Valconite Heights for the fiscal year beginning October first, twenty twenty-four, and ending September thirtieth, twenty twenty-five. We have a second from Councilman Sines. So do we have any further discussion?
So it's we have a first and a second on the floor. What is the actual tax rate? It's going to be.
Next item on the agenda. We'll get there.
However, I have put it on the slide already. And so it's it's the same as this year, point six zero four.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
And this just just a comment, we already approved the budget. And I know there's been a lot of.
Not yet. We have to, we had a vote on it, yeah.
In discussion anyway. So my my comment is, I know we're we're concerned about outsourcing dispatch. And I I myself, I'm not in favor of doing it. But I'm also very much against reducing other services to keep dispatch. So like in this go around, we lost one police officer. Next year, if we are not open and willing to study options. Are we willing to give up five police officer positions? So I just want to ask that we all continue to stay with an open mind and and keep moving forward. Because it it, in my opinion, it won't do us any good to have a dispatch if we don't have the officers available. Just comment.
Thank you, Councilman Lysia, for those comments. Any other comments, Councilman Burden?
I I would still like to recommend that we that we explore the reserve officers to get some reserves in here to to help too. And and that that would help the police department as well. Thank you.
Any other comments? Okay, so we have the motion. We finished with our discussion. Let's call for a vote. Councilman Valverde?
Hey.
Hey, Councilman Sines?
Yeah.
Councilman Lysia?
Yeah.
Councilman Sellers?
Yeah.
Councilman Burden?
Yeah.
Okay, we have a five oh record vote. Motion carries. Okay, so we now will move on to item number six, is that correct? Consideration in action to adopt an ordinance by record vote to approve ad valorem tax rate for twenty twenty-four tax year. Now, Mr. Messick, you can go ahead and discuss.
Waiting for the slides to catch up here. Lisa's doing a good job ramping her finger there. Okay, so the the same slides as last time. For this quick portion, we'll just be looking at the tax rate portion of it. Next slide, please. For your overview, the proposed tax rate remains unchanged. It's the same as last year. We're not increasing it. It is point six zero four for every one hundred dollars of property valuation. This rate will raise more total property taxes than last year's budget by nearly sixty thousand dollars or two point eight percent. And that's all because your property evaluations went up. None of that is because of the tax rate because obviously it did not go up. The maintenance and operations portion of the tax rate is point five five or about fifty-five cents for a hundred dollars of valuation. And it raises the one point nine million that's going to go into your city's general fund. And the interest in sinking portion of the tax rate is a little over a nickel for a hundred dollars of valuation and raises a hundred ninety-three thousand, eight hundred twenty-nine dollars to pay the city's tax back debt in the debt service fund. We've looked at these definitions before taxable value is your market value, your appraised value, less any exemptions the state and city provides. And it's what you use to calculate your 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 tax bill. Your tax rate is made up of two components, the INS and the M and O. INS is your debt, is your interest in sinking, and that's the portion that goes into the debt service fund. Your M and O is maintenance and operations, and that's the portion that goes into your general fund. As we said before, these are inversely proportional. If one goes up, the other goes down. So if you were to double your debt, for example, then the M and O portion would drop accordingly. And then we have the average home. That's something the county gives us every year for so people can estimate what their tax change will be. Historic value last year was three hundred and fifty million. It went up two point eight percent. So this year is three hundred and sixty million. And this is the biggest driver, of course, of your tax bill is the fact that your 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 taxable value, the city's taxable value traditionally keeps going up. We did have that one COVID year where where it went down. But you know, obviously, like everything, it's it's going to go up. Miss Lisa, historic tax rate, historically, the city maintains the same tax rate and just rides the increases of market value to gather the extra revenue that it needs. Last year, we adopted point six zero four. We're adopting the same rate this year, no change. And this is how we came up with our revenue requirements. Of course, we know what our debt is going to be. We know how much we need to balance the general fund. All that adds up to the tax rate of point six zero four and gives us the revenue that we need to balance. And so where does our where does our tax rate fall within our ceiling and floor? We often look at the voter approval rate as their ceiling. We don't want to go over that because if we do, it generates an automatic election. The no new revenue is considered a floor. You can certainly go above or below any of these rates if you wish. But our proposed tax rate is pretty close to the floor. And if it had to be anywhere, you'd want it closer to that than the ceiling, so. Average home increases nearly sixteen thousand dollars, which generates an additional ninety-six dollars for the average home, for the average resident. And that's the city portion of the tax bill. Rate comparisons, Valconite Heights, one of the highest, but it, of course, reflects the the level of services that that you wish to have. Tax entities, this hasn't changed. It was just shown to show that the city's leverage in your tax bill is only about twenty percent. And we said theoretically that the the city could say no taxes whatsoever. And all these other entities could raise their tax rate, and you still end up paying more on your tax bill.
Can you go back the slide before that on the comparison of the other city? Can you go back uh, the slide before that on the comparison of the other city?
As far as who's paying the bulk of the taxes in the city, commercial about sixty-five percent, multifamily is about twenty-five percent. Of course, they pass that cost on to the customer. Uh, residential spend about ten percent of the tax bill, and of course, we have city and state uh, exemptions to protect that. So in summary, again, the the proposed tax rate is unchanged. It's the same as what we're currently operating under. It's point six zero four for one hundred dollars of property valuation. This rate will raise more total property taxes than last year's budget by nearly sixty thousand dollars or two point eight percent. Uh, and there's the two portions of it again, and what makes up the rate. So at this point, I was going to go ahead and say the end of public hearing and do the votes, but we can just go ahead to the.
Did you have a motion that you'd like for the council members to use?
Uh, yes, sir. So for this, there's so for this, there's two of them. The first thing we're going to do is adopt the tax rate with this motion, and then we're going to ratify the tax rate with the next one.
With this motion, this. We're going to entertain a motion now.
Um, yes, sir.
So, Councilman, we haven't entertained a motion. Who'd like to move forward with the motions?
May I be recognized?
Yes, you may.
I make a motion to adopt the levying of an ad valorem tax rate of point six zero four for every one hundred dollars valuation for the support of the city government of the City of Balcony Heights and approving the separate components of such tax rate for maintenance and operations and for debt service.
Thank you, Councilman signs.
Like a lawyer wrote that.
Sorry, do we have? What did he say?
A lawyer wrote that.
Do we have a second?
My second.
Mr. Valverde has seconded that motion. Um, let's call for any further discussion. Do we have any further discussion? Mr. White, did you want anything? Okay, we've decided to move on. All right, so let's go ahead and call for the record vote on it. Mr. Valverde?
Yeah.
Mr. Signs?
Yeah.
Mr. Lacer?
Yeah.
Councilman Lacer, Councilman Sellers?
Yeah.
Councilman Burton?
Yeah.
Okay, a motion carries to approve the tax rate, adopt tax rate to adopt the levying of an ad valorem tax rate of point zero point six zero four for every one hundred dollar valuation for the support of the city government of the City of Balcony Heights and approving the separate components of such tax rate for maintenance and operation for debt service. So the motion carries five oh. Majority, thank you.
For our next motion.
Okay, now we're gonna do the um, ratify the tax rate, agenda seven. Uh, can you give a little explanation on that, Mr. Messick? Ratifying of the tax rate?
I can if you want me to. A few legislation sessions ago, the legislature requires municipalities and counties and other governing taxing entities to have a separate motion so that the public is fully aware that if the tax rate is going to uh, add additional income, that there has to be a separate vote. Even though you just did that with your adoption of your tax rate, you now need a separate vote so that the public is aware that this uh, by ratifying the tax rate, you you're notifying the public that this rate will increase the income by approximately sixty thousand dollars.
Okay, thank you very much for that explanation. I appreciate it. Anybody um, would like to, you want to wait till out of courtesy for Mr. Lacer? Come back, would you all like to take a couple of minutes break or everybody okay? Shall we wait for him to come back?
I'd like to.
I think, let's take a quick little five minute break, let everybody go to the restroom, stretch out a little bit and move on. Great, thank you. The time is um, let me give you the actual time. Time is seven thirty-four P M. Tell me when. Got it? Thank you. The time is seven forty-four P M. We will now resume where we left off. So we had the language up, I think, Ms. Merle, for the um, the item. Take your time. No problem. Okay. Everyone ready? So let's move now to um, item number seven that we were discussing. Uh, let's ask the council for a motion for a vote. Who wants to make the motion?
I'll make the motion.
Councilman signs will make the motion. Go ahead, Mr. Councilman signs.
I make a motion to ratify the approved tax rate, which will raise more than more total property taxes than last year's budget by fifty-nine thousand four hundred and sixty-three dollars, as reflected in the adopted two thousand twenty-four, two thousand twenty-five fiscal year budget.
Fantastic. Do we have a second to Councilman signs's motion? Councilman Valverde has seconded that motion?
A second, yes.
Let's go ahead and call for a rec for a record vote on this. Councilman Valverde, now let's open it up for more discussion. Do we have any other discussion on this? Would anyone like to talk about the ratification of this? Okay, then let's go ahead and call for the vote. Councilman Valverde?
Yeah.
Councilman signs?
Yeah.
Councilman, uh, yeah?
Yeah.
Sellers?
Yeah.
Councilman Burton?
Yeah.
Okay, we have a five oh vote for the language of make the ratify the approved tax rates, we will raise more to total property taxes and last year's budget by fifty-nine four sixty-three, as reflected in the adopted two thousand twenty-four, twenty-five fiscal year budget. Thank you very much, council members.
Uh, Mayor Matt Adrobas, I would like to thank the the mayor and the council members for working with us on this budget. I know it's a lot of information and a lot of stuff to absorb. And and thank many thanks to the staff as well for their inputs. So I appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you to you as well, and thank you to staff as well for everything that you've done um, to get this done. And I'm just so happy to hear that we're not outsourcing dispatch this year, and we are um, not raising taxes for the taxpayers. So I'm happy. Any um, other comments? Anybody else? No? Okay. Okay, now we're at number eight. Discuss and adopt a tax abatement ordinance with guidelines and policy statement on establishing criteria for tax abatement guidelines and evaluating incentive applications.
Mayor, if you recall, these this matter was tabled um, at the last council meeting for council wanted a further review and so forth. Again, this is just a tool in the toolbox to offer individuals or companies that may want to come to balcony sites. Again, they're not mandated. Each company would have to be approved individually by council. It's just that so they would know what's available if they wanted to come as far as abatements of availability.
Okay, thank you, counselor. So has the council um, reviewed and uh, taken a look at the guidelines and policy statement establishing criteria? And what is the the wish of the city council? Councilman Burton, I mean, excuse me, seller?
Mr. Garza, this tax abatement ordinance, um, does it have a specific time limit or uh, allowing them a a discount or?
Well, um, state law allows up to approximately twenty years, but council's direction was they want to know abatements longer than five years. So this policy would limit abatements to no more than five years.
But it can be done for one year.
Oh, sure, definitely. In fact, if I if a company was coming forward that only had about a hundred thousand dollars of investment, uh, the max allowable under this ordinance would be two years. Council could say, you know what, that's not, we prefer more than a hundred thousand investment. We're going to limit your abatement to one year. So council, again, these are just guidelines. Each entity would have to come individually to seek what they're going to be able to get from the council.
Okay, thank you. And and I would like to recommend to the city council that we do this just for one year because we we can't, we're trying to raise money. Uh, we already spending too much money in staff on overtime here. Um, so I I think one year is reasonable.
Thank you, Councilman Sellers. Do we have any other comments, Councilman Burton?
Rank by the same token. Apple Store wants to be on the corner where Lax used to be, and they want a ten-year abatement. Council can decide that and change that, or is it just always going to be capped?
Council says these are guidelines. Council can always amend the guidelines. For example, Apple wants to come into that corner and put in a huge investment, twenty twenty-five, forty million dollar investment onto that corner with guaranteed forty positions or forty. Again, those are all things council consider at that time.
Thank you.
Any other questions from the council members regarding the abatement guidelines and policy? Okay, do we have a motion on the floor to, do you have anything else, Mr. Burton?
No, nobody actually queried about the the uh, maybe a trial period of the year. How 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 does any else, anybody else feel about that?
So I don't know if we can do just a trial for one year. So.
Guidelines are at the council's discretion. These guidelines are good for approximately five years under the Texas.
I think I think they're saying we'll only offer these abatements for a period of one year.
If the council wanted to adopt the guidelines for simple for test period of one year and then one year come back and see how they're doing, council could do so. The they must be reviewed every five years under the Texas tax code. So some cities review them every five years and then decide to uh, re-adopt them or modify their guidelines. If council simply makes a motion to adopt these guidelines for a test period of one year to see how they do, that'd be fine as well.
Okay.
You finished, Councilman sign?
Yes.
Okay, any other questions? Okay, so do we have a motion on the floor to um, to adopt the tax abatement ordinance with guidelines and policy statements? Yes.
I make a motion on the floor to adopt for one year.
Okay, with with the terminology of one year only?
With the terminology of one year, and and if you want to reevaluate it in one year, that's fine.
Okay.
So hi- his rec, the way I understand his motion is to adopt the guidelines uh, for a one-year period and bring them back one year after, see how they've done.
Hey, we have a second to Councilman Sellers' motion.
I, can I ask for an amendment on that? Okay, can we amend that and look at it in nine months? That way we're not up against the clock in one year and then don't have a lot of time to evaluate any kind of data.
So it's.
But it just, point of order, real quick, on the last meeting we had, where we had this issue, just so my clarification. Um, your counselor told us that we needed to get a second on the original motion, and then after that. Right, before you can have an amendment to it. So Councilman signs, at point of order, we.
I will second his motion.
There you go.
And then may I be recognized?
And then now go ahead and call for any discussion. And then at that point, he didn't allow us to amend anything. We just had to take a vote.
No, sir.
I know, but I'm just saying that's what happened.
You're always allowed to amend.
Yeah.
As long as it's it's, the amendment must be consistent with the main motion.
Main motion is correct.
And and as long as the the uh, the it gets a second and approved.
Okay.
Then, but it has to be consistent with that main.
All right, I just just so point of order, you we weren't allowed to do that the last meeting. He told us we couldn't do it, even put an amendment to it. But that's okay. We've got a second by Councilman signs, so um.
May I be recognized?
Any other discussion?
Want to amend it?
Yeah, may I be recognized? I can offer an amendment. So I would offer an amendment that we uh, adopt the the ordinance for a period of one year, but we come back in nine months to start the review review process.
I'll agree with that.
Okay, so we have a motion on the floor right now. The first motion is to amend, I mean, excuse me, to adopt. And then we had a second to adopt by the same author of the second amendment. So we need to vote for the first one, is that correct?
Correct. You you vote on the amendment first, and then you would vote on the motion as amended.
Okay, so let's go ahead and call a vote uh, as amended, Councilman Valverde, as amended with the one-year amendment.
Yeah, for nine months.
Nine months, excuse me, nine months.
Yeah.
Hey, Councilman signs?
Yeah.
Councilman, uh, excuse me, uh, Councilman, uh, Lacer?
Yeah.
Councilman Sellers?
Yeah.
Councilman Burton?
Yeah.
Okay, motion carries on that one with the amendment for nine months. Motion carries five oh, five oh. Now we'll move on the first amendment, is correct.
To the on the motion now as amended.
So we have a motion on the table as amended. Councilman Valverde?
Yeah.
Councilman signs?
Yeah.
Councilman Lacer?
Yeah.
Councilman Sellers?
Yeah.
Councilman Burton?
Yeah.
Five oh motion carries as amended.
Good old Rob's rules.
Okay, now we have item number nine, discussion and action pertaining to an investment pool transfer of five hundred thousand to our bank due to cash, low cash balance. Um, I placed this item on the agenda because on the weekly report, um, I had seen it and I didn't know, again, questioning the validity, whether we could do something like that without council approval. I think I got clarification from Mr. Messick and our counselor that that is allowable. We'll find out in just a minute. Um, we have um, the item on the to discuss and any action if we have to take. So shall I go ahead and just call for a vote on it and then open it up for discussion? Or do we have want to have discussion with people that may have an interest in it? Okay, and we also have, uh, I think Charles is also Lamar, Lamar. Lamar, uh, Gillian has would like to address that item number nine. Absolutely. Absolutely. Mr. Messick?
Good evening, everyone. We're here to pass the FY twenty-seven, twenty-eight budget. Not kidding, isn't it?
Wrong.
We just got done with.
Wrong item, wrong item.
Falling asleep here. Yeah, so mayor, um, thi- this transfer is certainly within my authority to make, and it is, it was just a precautionary measure as operating cash at the time, at the end of August, was getting below my comfort threshold. There is no set threshold. It's just a- as I look at it. Um, so it fell below one point five. You can see on your investment report, we ended August at one point one million. That's a little low for my taste. It's more than enough to cover expenses, but I, but this time of the year, and throughout the summer and in September, a lot of people hit us up with invoices on the AP side because it's the end of the fiscal year for everybody. Unfortunately, our revenues are lagging because sales taxes are are two months behind, franchise taxes are a quarter behind. And so we just want to make sure we have enough cash in the i- in the bank to make sure that we can cover our bills that we know are coming up. Uh, so this is cyclical. At the beginning of every year, in January, February, you're going to have a lot of ad valorem money coming in. At that point, it'll go well above the one point five threshold that I have, and we'll actually move money out. Um, and I've I've written down the last six times we've done this. We've done this since two thousand nineteen. We move five hundred thousand out in in the spring, we bring it back in again. And and so that's the reason for the transfer. Uh, it's authorized under the city's investment policy, Public Funds Investment Act. Um, it does require the the approval of the other two voting, uh, of the finance investment officers. I'm sorry, and that would be Mr. Porellos and Ms. Merle. So I can't just willy-nilly just go out there and start transferring money. I have to have their approval with it. And and again, it's just a precautionary thing.
Okay, and the item does not require um, council approval?
Uh, no, sir.
It only requires your approval and the city administrator.
And Ms. Merle.
Okay.
Plus two.
All right.
Yes.
All right, Councilman Burton?
Yeah, just for my sake too, and 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 everybody's is the investment pool like a a stock fund for us or what and and what are the implications of taking money out? Is there does it, does it hurt us down the road or?
Uh, no, sir. Typically, what I like to maintain is a two to one uh, ratio. So for every one dollar we have in the operating account at the bank, we have two dollars in the investment pool. Uh, obviously, you're going to make mu- much more interest in a pool than you do at the bank. And so as as often as we can, we want to make sure we're moving that money into the pool where we can. Uh, because you're going to get like five, over five percent is what we've been averaging, almost two hundred thousand dollars of interest this year from the pools, uh, because interest rates are high. Of course, when it goes down, that's a different story, but you always get more money in the pool. And so uh, we do have two pools, Lone Star and Tex Pool, and that's a two to one split as well. Uh, two dollars would go to Lone Star and one dollar would be for Tex Pool. Tex Pool is a little more conservative. Lone Star is a little bit more aggressive, so.
Mr. Burton, your your microphone isn't on.
Yeah, just hold on. You finish, yeah?
Uh, we just, the implication then is we just lose a little bit of interest.
Uh, for about six months, and then hopefully we can transfer it back in again, yes, sir. But yeah, we have to make sure that that we that we're paying the bills, making payroll and all that stuff. So that's our primary responsibility, not making interest, but yes.
And um, if if you were just to do it with two hundred and fifty thousand, would that be still with your threshold or you you prefer the five hundred?
I I prefer five hundred because we're getting close to one million, and we want to keep about one point five.
Thank you.
Did you want to say something, Councilman? Signs?
No, I was just reminding Mr. Burton to make sure his microphone was on for the recording.
Okay. So the only the only thing I had a concern about that when I saw it was, one, can it be done the way you mentioned it can? And then, secondly, um, the danger of what if that ad valorem tax doesn't come in the way it's supposed to? And then now we pull that money out, we don't have that money that came in historically. We don't have that money that came in historically and timely the way it did. In other words, the guarantee of that money being put back. It would be in jeopardy if, you know, we pulled it out based on what my uncle used to call in the Air Force pie in the sky money. It may come in, it may not. We've historically had it in, but what if? You know, worst case scenario occurs, what do we do then?
Right.
And that's the only precaution that I I kind of just was a little bit concerned about.
Yeah, so adware, of course, is your most dependable source of uh revenue, sales tax, not so much. But um whatever the, you know, the rate sets, that money is going to start coming in. And usually we're at a hundred percent collection rate, so uh by January and February, we should be rolling in the money, so to speak. Uh, so we don't have to rob Peter to pay Paul, whatever. Uh, whatever phrase I could throw out there, but yeah, it it should be there and then um come to January, February.
Note taken. Thank you. Any other questions? Okay. So there's no action item on this. We don't need to do anything. Let's go on to the next item on on the agenda. Uh Lamar, did you want to? That's right. You wanted to come forward?
Mr. Messick, answer my question.
Okay, fantastic. Thank you, Lamar. Thank you, councilman, uh, Sellers, for reminding me. Um, discussion and action on number item number ten. Uh, possible action to amend the council relations policy and code of ethics regarding preparation of the agenda. Specifically, chapter V, article B, paragraph two, section. I had placed this item on the agenda and then Mr. Signs also added his name to it, so I guess he wants to discuss it. We have councilman Charles White that wanted to speak on this item. Uh, former councilman Charles White.
Exactly familiar about each. Item in that policy, although. I was the author of the uh. Code of Conduct Policy. I'm assuming this pertains to the number of days. To. Put an item, discussion or action on the agenda. Uh, we mainly did that so that Delia wouldn't be here till ten or eleven o'clock at night. And uh. Frank would be able to eat dinner. For items that would come in and get approved. So, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. White. Any other comments? Councilman Burton? Do you want them?
Uh. When when I was looking this up, because um. I gu- I guess Delia spoiled me when I was on council before. Um, you know, as long as we got them in by Wednesday or Thursday, you know, it it was accepted. But uh. They were saying it was six days and so I I went online and it said five days online. Uh, that you have to have it in for five days and then. Uh, I looked at the the last um update to the code. The the code book or uh council relations book and and it it does state six days, so. There is a discrepancy in there, just to let y'all know.
Hey. Yes, councilman Sellers.
I I just would, can someone tell me? What article B, paragraph two says?
Basically, though, what that article says is that it's the time limit that you have for a special call meeting. Like the one we just had recently.
Mayor.
That special call meeting.
May I be recognized?
Um, let me finish. If you if you want to, please, I'll extend you the courtesy. Go ahead, councilman.
Thank you. So I'll read.
If you're going to explain it to them.
I'm gonna read verbatim what it says. That way it's clear for all the council members and everyone present. So uh for agenda items, it says any council member may request an agenda item to be placed on any regular or special meeting as long as the request is submitted six business days. Prior to the council meeting for an action item and three business days prior to the council meeting for a discussion item. Then it gives a little bit more clarity. All such requests shall contain the following minimum information in writing. One, the name and department of the person filing the request. Two, the date the request is filed and the date of the meeting at which the matter matters to be addressed. Three, a brief concise statement of the matter to be addressed. And four, a copy of any supportive documents or attachments.
What are we trying to amend here?
Um, the reason I put it on the agenda, councilman Signs and everyone else, my colleagues on the board. Is because I was wanting to see if you might want to explore the possibility of removing those six days off of the. Um, that particular item and just make it to where anybody that needs to place an item on the agenda. In my discussion with our city attorney about this, I brought up an issue that. In the way that this last um. Process took place in which you uh councilman Science and councilman uh. Lysia and councilman Sellers had pla- put placed the item on the agenda under the three-member rule, which is fine. It's no problem. But what happened is there was a day lapse between that day and we didn't get the agenda request that you had sent in until the following day. I think, correct, Delia, you got it on the tenth and we got it on the eleventh. So then by the time that I wanted to add something on to the agenda on that day, I could not add it because. It was already past the sixth day according to Delia and I didn't meet the requirement. So. What it can be used for, if it's strategically used by, and I'm not accusing anybody of anything, I just want to point out how it worked out. And if it can, it's used strategically like that, it can be used to prevent other council members to place item on the agenda because they're placing it so close. To the deadline that if there's that one day miss or whatever reason that somebody's not in the office or able to. Disseminate that information to your fellow council members, then it discriminates them from being able to place an item on the agenda that you just put on. Because they didn't meet the timeline. And so I was just wanting to see if the council would consider just eliminating that completely. And just leave it to where the council members can place the items on the agenda without a time limit. When I spoke to our city attorney, Mr. Garza, he said that very few cities. His knowledge do that and we're one of the few cities that have that rule. So. I just thought maybe perhaps the council might want to consider it, look at it and see if we could just eliminate it, make it easier for a council process. That's it.
Mayor.
Yeah. Councilman Sellers. And to no offense.
Personally, I I would like to keep it the way it is and because I foresee in the future. Limiting the number of items on the agenda and limiting the time. Uh, that city council meetings are held. I also agree that. We need time for the citizens to look at the agenda to see if they want to come up and and. Um, you know, inter intervene with some of the items. Uh, it also gives. I mean, five days or six days. I mean, he just showed me five days. Somebody said six. I don't know what it is, but there is definitely a discrepancy. Uh, but I I think that should stay. I I kind of like it the way it is. There's there's been more than one occasion uh where we've been held here past midnight. Uh, because so many items are on the agenda. Uh, and we're trying to save money and we're we're all these guys are on overtime here. Uh, I just feel like uh there should be a cutoff date to put items on the agenda and I like it the way it is.
Thank you, councilman Sellers. Any other comments?
Mayor.
Councilman Signs.
Thank you. So um, there's actually a reason why I put this on here and I'm actually the. Request that I make is actually to shorten the timeframe, but add a little bit more clarity to the defined time whereas an agenda must be submitted. So I am. Uh, requesting that be submitted by twelve PM, five business days prior to the council meeting. For an action item or twelve PM, three business days prior to a council meeting for a discussion item. Um, so that would give a little bit more clarity. That way people aren't submitting them at four fifty nine PM for Delia and then she's not staying like to put them on. It gives her time during the day to add those and it gives very specific guidelines for us. And it says the mayor or any council member may request an agenda item to be placed on any regular or special meeting. As long as the request is submitted by twelve PM Central Standard Time, five business days prior to the council meeting for an action item. And twelve PM Central Standard Time, three business days prior to the council meeting for a discussion item. So, mayor, I do want to uh address your concern. Um, what we could do to alleviate your concern is to modify at a future meeting, special called meetings. So right now there's no timeframe defined. So we could put in a timeframe for special call meetings. So if you want one, it would need to be seven business days or ten business days or something. Before the date. So if as an example, so that would alleviate your concern, but it also um address David's concern or Mr. Sellers' concerns that we do have um a timeframe on there.
I think that's a reasonable one, reasonable uh suggestion.
Uh, Mr. Burton has a.
Mr. Burton.
Um, y'all took the words out of my mouth. Uh, that is, that's that's very reasonable and. Uh, I would also ask that it's updated to reflect that on the website.
Yes, it will be. I don't know where it says that.
I've I've got it.
But um, yeah, we'll correct that.
Okay.
Okay, perfect. I think that meets the requirement of everyone feeling comfortable with it. Do we have any other comments from anyone else? Okay, so do we have a motion on the floor?
I moved. I moved to uh. Make a motion to uh adopt. The five-day, was it twelve forty-five?
No, twelve PM. If you want, I can read it and do you want to reread it?
Yeah.
Thank you. I'll withdraw my motion.
Okay, I'll make the motion with.
Go ahead, make your motion, councilman Signs, since you have the language for it.
All right, I'll make a motion to uh amend the council relations policy and code of ethics regarding preparation of the agenda. To read uh specifically chapter five, article B, paragraph two, sec- section C. Um, the mayor or any council member may request an agenda item to be placed on any regular or special meeting. As long as the request is submitted by twelve PM Central Standard Time, five business days prior to the council meeting for an action item. And twelve PM Central Standard Time, three business days prior to the council meeting for a discussion item.
I second.
That was second by councilman Burton. Okay, a call for discussion. Any other discussion? All in favor? Oh, excuse me, I'm sorry. Let's go to record vote. Uh, councilman Valverde.
Aye.
Hey, councilman Signs.
Yeah.
Councilman Lysia.
Yeah.
Councilman Sellers.
Yeah.
Councilman Burton.
Yeah.
Motion carries five oh, and if you can just send us all that. The ruling on that and we'll both put that in our paperwork.
Every.
Councilman Signs.
Ms. Sanchez, I can email you the wording so that way you don't have to.
Okay, that'll be great.
Perfect. That'll work for her. Okay, that moves on to the item number ten. We would go now to item number eleven, discussion and action to freeze position of retirement captain Mark Knight. Alkona Heights Fire Department effective retired date of September thirty, twenty twenty-four. So um, this may be um an opportunity for the city to save some money. And not really affect the uh department and I'd like to hear everybody's input on this to make sure to see if this is something that can be done. It's not in stone. It's something to just consider, to discuss. And to see if it will help our budget now and in the future uh for the time being until we can do something.
May I be recognized?
Yes, go ahead, councilman Signs.
I I don't think this is a good idea. Um, I'll give a um. A use case where Captain Knight was on vacation one day and. Fortunately, the chief, Chief Mottakine, happened to be at the fire station and there was a big fire at the Boston Woods apartment complex. Um, Chief Mottakine was able to join the other firefighters that were on duty and were able to rescue a woman from a burning building. Had Chief Mottakine not been, happened to spend the night that night uh due to circumstances. Uh, we would not have had the personnel on site to potentially rescue this woman. She could have been injured or or worse. So I don't think we should um be freezing positions in our public safety departments, fire or police. Um, unless absolutely necessary.
Okay, um, as I mentioned earlier, I just was putting it up into a discussion and possibly consideration. See how the council feels about it, just trying to save money and to see if you can. You know, help the budget. Yes, councilman Lysia.
On on the uh same topic, I'd like to get the uh. The opinion of the uh fire chief on the impacts if this. Losing this one position.
Sure, let's get his.
Well, first, the positions have been filled already. So I've already filled a captain and a lieutenant I promoted last week, so. But the impact, I feel that if if you freeze a position. It's likely to freeze another one and then another one, and so it'll probably end up just cutting staff, so. That's my opinion on that.
So your opinion is of what?
Did we keep freezing positions? They'll just lead to another frozen position and then another one and then another one.
And that was not the intent, just so you know. I just was looking at a way. Considering the the salaries that I had reviewed and I thought maybe this is a way the city can save some money now that the opportunity is there. Uh, I had did not know that you had already filled the position. As of last week, you said?
Yes, sir.
All right, so I just wanted input from the council to see how you feel about it. Anyone else?
The chief, other than. Other than the position.
One floor?
Yes, it's on the floor. Other than the position being filled, operationally, how would it impact you losing one position?
So that would leave a short one person for the two-in, two-out rule. That would uh create. Us just waiting for our mutual aid companies to arrive and then we can make entry. Depending on if there's an actual life safety, life inside to be saved, we can make entry. But if it's confirmed that there's no nobody inside, then we have to wait outside till we get. Additional engine companies or or crew members to actually make entry into a structure.
Thank you, Chief.
Yep, okay. Thank you, Mr. Lysia. Anyone else? Councilman.
Yes, sir. Uh, I have another question too, chief, fire chief. The city has three captains and three lieutenants. Uh, are the lieutenants supposed to take the place of a captain if the captain is missing?
Yes, they do that, but they also. Seeing that we have multiple trucks, we need an officer on each truck as the trucks go out. So that somebody's accountable for the the firemen, you know, as a as an officer, as just like the military when you have a superior and subordinate. That that's the purpose behind that. But yes, to answer your question, yes, a lieutenant does act as the officer in charge when the captain's not.
Okay, and uh. We're talking about. Action to freeze this position. My question is how long are we going to freeze it?
However, the council chooses you'd like to for the future would be solely dependent on your discretion.
Okay, that's that's what I need to know. I just wonder how my colleagues feel how. If we freeze it for how long? You all think it's a good idea?
Yep, same here. Councilman Burton.
In in considering this, um. And um. I I appreciate it being on the on the agenda. And I I was I was trying to think of ways to. That this could work or not work and stuff. And um. You know, uh. Like uh, Mr. Valverde alluded to, you know, lieutenant versus a captain. And then hiring another firefighter on the back end so that we're not paying captain salary yet. But but we have a firefighter, but right now, um, we just passed the budget. So I guess I guess we're we're good, so. Uh, I think I think uh. It it we we. We can look at it down the road if if if, you know, absolutely have to, but. Uh, budget's passed. So we're good for another year.
May I be recognized?
Councilman Burton, you go? Okay, councilman Signs.
Yeah, I'd like to make a motion to deny this uh action item.
Okay. Uh, do we have a second to that motion?
I second that.
Do we have any further discussion on the matter? Okay, let's go ahead and call for the vote. Councilman Valverde.
Yay.
I just want to say thank you to everybody for at least looking at it and as a possibility to help save some money. Uh, councilman Signs.
Yeah.
Councilman Lysia.
Yeah.
Councilman Sellers.
Yeah.
Councilman Burton. Hey, motion carries five oh. Nothing will be done about that action item. Okay? So now let's move on to item number twelve. Discussion action pertaining to violation of city code of ethics. Number twelve and thirteen and calling for immediate investigation by independent authority to identify and hold accountable. Those responsible for the unauthorized disclosure of executive session discussion. So where this stems from, um. Is the incident that took place. is the incident that took place. And it was, I was made aware very distinctly that, um, what was discussed in our executive session with an employee of ours, um, had been leaked out. And there were several statements and comments made by the employee that indicated that he had knowledge because of the names that he produced and, um, the activities that took place in that executive session. So I addressed the city council in our executive session to be very careful of not leaking any information of an executive session because of the possibility of a safety concern for myself and my family because of the seriousness of the allegations that were being made um, in our police department. And so the encounter and the discussion that took place was with the representative of our police department, Chief Janahara. And as a result, he indicated to me that he was disappointed because of the fact that I did not come to him to report what I had reported to the city council. And he referenced the, some of the language that I utilized regarding the Texas Rangers or the FBI. And he specifically said those things, and that's when I knew that he knew what we discussed in our executive session. So why I'm calling for an independent investigation is because the integrity and the safety and the security of our executive session has been compromised. And as a result of it being compromised, my family is afraid. My wife just told me the other day, I don't feel safe here in the city anymore. We, um, my son had an officer pass by him the other day. He saw him, he looked at him very intently. Didn't wave to him, my son waved to him, he said hello. He has nothing to do with what I do here in the city. My family is not at fault for anything. They don't get involved in the council meetings, they don't come to the meetings. And I think that it's unfair that my family would be treated like that, that they would feel danger from our own police officers because of maybe poss- possibly something that I revealed of a very serious allegation in which I'm going to reveal to the public about. I had gotten an officer that came to see me. And I'm not gonna reveal his name. I will reveal it to the Texas Rangers and I will reveal it to the FBI if I have to, whatever entity that needed, it needs to be reported. Is what I need to have looked at and investigated. What I reported to the council was only what was reported to me. And the allegations from this individual was that a lieutenant Herrera in our police department had brought in a female to our police department and had sex with her in our building.
Mayor, this is not in the course of this agenda item. Your agenda item is very specific. Your, your specific item was on the disclosure of what occurred in executive session.
That's what I'm talking about. The disclosure, what was disclosed? That was disclosed in the executive session, and I think it's important the citizens know the reasoning why I'm needing an investigation to be called, because the council would not take action when I brought it to their attention. Your own council told us that.
Ourselves, how you could proceed with communicating with the Texas Rangers. I provided you the, the contact information.
But I think it's important that our citizens know why, what has occurred and what we have in our department.
It is not appropriate, it is not appropriate for a potential investigation to be interfered with, with public discussion.
Even if I'm divulging what was told to me.
I will tell you that the Texas Rangers nor the FBI are going to be very appreciative that it has been made public before they've been given the opportunity to start that investigation.
Then why is it that you didn't call them as I asked your?
No, sir. I don't have the complaint. I, that's why I provided you the information. You're the individual that has the complaint. I was not there that evening and therefore it was your complaint and I provided you who to contact with the Texas Rangers as to who to make that complaint with.
So then let me just close with this and say that these allegations were brought to me of serious nature of problems that we have within our police department. Allegedly, allegedly is the perfect word. Now, like I said, I don't know if they're true or not, but they were reported to me. So I had an obligation to report it to the city council. Now, the basis of Chief Janahara's being disappointed is the word he used, is the fact that I didn't come to him. That was his specific words to me, that I did not go to you because I don't trust you. And you were upset, you said you weren't, but you were upset visibly and basically said to me, I'm very disappointed because you didn't come to me first. And I told you that I didn't come to you first because of certain things. And the reason is because the allegations are alleging
I don't think you can forget it, sir.
About persons in our department. And so I had to make a decision as to who do I report it to, and I reported it to the city council in executive session. And so what I'm asking for is an independent investigation to be conducted to determine where the leak occurred. Where did this information get to our police chief? How did it get to his hands and how did he come knowledgeable of that information that was supposed to be privileged and was supposed to be discussed in executive session?
Mayor, may I be recognized?
So that is the purpose of why I'm bringing the item. Um, this very important item, and I'm looking for help and support for this to be investigated by the proper authority. And now I know who I will be going to, which will be the Texas Rangers, and I will make the report myself. So.
May I be recognized, please?
Who said, good luck?
I didn't hear anything.
Good luck? You said that? Okay, so, um.
I think, uh, Councilman, so it should be recognized.
Thank you. So I looked up the executive session from that budget meeting and it says discussion percent two five five one, does zero seven one consultation with attorney regarding complaints filed against the city and legal option on how to proceed. There was no action item at all, so you're, you just a moment ago accused us of not taking action.
Excuse me, I, 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 I may, may, maybe I'm maybe incorrect in that, and I, and I'm acknowledging that maybe. But the reason I put this on here is that that ethics item basically addresses two things. Is that all council members and anyone subject to an executive session that is involved in it are subject to a confidentiality clause, meaning that anything discussed in executive session, this is under the council policy.
If I may, I'll reply to that.
I'll let you toward in just a minute. And so that number 12 item gives the, says that there's a rule that a council member cannot reveal any information that's discussed in a city council meeting. Number 13 says that a council member can be removed under the local government code for violation of disclosing any confidential information in executive session. And so those two is why I chose number 12 and number 13. And so all I'm looking for is to get an immediate, to ask the council to investigate and to find out where the leak came from of the executive session. And that's all I'm asking for.
Hang on, if I may.
Uh, Science, go ahead.
Yeah, I wasn't done. So, um, I, I, I would like to hear from Chief Janahara, uh, because this was captured on, on video and audio recording in the justice center here. And during that interaction, uh, Chief Janahara did explain where he learned the information. It gave you a name specifically.
Yeah, he did give the name.
Of who he heard the, the rumors from, where he did, got this information. Specifically, you asked him for the, the phone numbers for the FBI and the, the Texas Rangers.
But how do you know that I was asking him in reference to that? I also got numbers from our city attorney, Frank Garza. Well, so you're alluding to something that.
When you, when you start hearing rumors and you start hearing other information, you start getting other information, a seasoned investigator like Chief Janahara will be able to add to and to. But I would like to ask him to, um, defend himself or give it, give us his, his, uh, side of the story and, and then we can make a decision as a council whether or not to, uh, authorize this investigation.
Councilman Burton?
Sorry, um, I would, I would like it to go down the line.
Okay.
Before I hear from, from
All right.
Chief Janahara, I'd like to hear from Mr. Alisea. And, uh, I was, I was right after Mr. Alisea.
Ma- Mayor, if you would, go back and repeat what you had said about item 12 and item 13.
Okay, so item 12 and 13, under the city council code of ethics, number 12 and 13 here, it says it very clearly, a council member should not intentionally or knowingly disclose any confidential information gained by reason and set official position concerning the property operation policies or affairs of the city. The city does, the rule does not prohibit any disclosure that is no longer confidential by law or the confidential reporting of illegal unethical conduct to authorities designated by the law. Thirteen, any sustained violation of the code of conduct by any council members are grounds for removal in accordance with section 21.025 of the local government code. Any council member may only be removed from office in accordance with chapter 21, subchapter B of the local government code.
Okay, so.
So that pervades them out of the council.
So if I'm understanding you correct, what you're looking for is to find out who leaked the information out of executive session. And once that's determined, you're saying that person should be removed from the council?
Well, that's what the book says.
No, but, but I'm just asking that, that is what, what you stated.
I won't know that until, until we find out the results of the investigation.
Okay, and, and, and I would like, just in, in my opinion, that we study what we've heard today, because if I'm not mistaken, Mr. Rodriguez has already divulged what was discussed during the executive session to everybody present. So with that being said, I think it's appropriate, we move forward and we ask for you to be removed.
I think that's appropriate because I am providing notice to the.
I, I, I understand that, but you divulged the information that was provided during the executive session.
Because the door was open when the situation occurred with Chief Janahara. That old door was open, okay? Because the whole premise, think about it. The whole premise of me providing this notice to the council is because Chief Janahara related to me the items and the things that were being discussed. He himself already divulged those items. Now, how did he know about it?
And, and that's, and that's, and that's. And that's what we're gonna find out later. The point I'm trying to make now is that you yourself have publicly already divulged the information from executive session.
I have to respectfully disagree.
And, 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 and that's, and those are my comments right now.
So I have to respectfully disagree.
Oh, I was after.
Okay, go ahead. Um, council, he's finished.
No, no, Mr. Burton is next.
I was next.
Okay, go ahead.
Well, the, the original leak, we don't know who did it.
That's right.
We may never know who did it. There were seven members, seven people in the, in, in the room at that time. Six council people, including the mayor and a city attorney. Including the mayor. That was, that, there's the first leak. The second leak was when it was sent out by email by former city administrator to everybody. The third, I went up to the mall to go buy something at Five Below and there was a different, uh, mall person who asked me what's going on in the city. I, 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 I heard basically what the topic was. So my, my concern is not, right now is not what was said in, in, in the, the, the topic that we, we talked about. My concern is I look at everybody in here and who can I trust? Who can I trust? I can trust Lamar, okay. Uh, but who, who can, seriously, if, and, and, uh, Mr. Rodriguez prefaced himself that he, that he felt, whether you think it's hearsay, because truly until there's a complaint, it's hearsay. But he, he, he's preference himself by saying, this is, this is a very important topic. And I fear that if this got out in the wrong hands, which it has now, and, and it's just dominoed. It's dominoed. People at the mall know it, staff know it. And the, and the, the staff is upset. And I, I truly hope we can find where the, the leak is. I mean, it, I, I don't know who I can trust in here. If I could ever bring anything up in executive session without tattling or, or talking, you know, and I, I, when Ms. Deleon was mayor, I, 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 it's kind of a crude comment, but I'll, 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 I'll make it better, if you will. You, you can't pass gas in the city without somebody knowing it. You know, every, everybody tells everybody, the city is so small, stuff gets out. And, uh, I, I just don't like the fact that items that were discussed in, in executive session have made the rumor pool. And the rumor pool isn't healthy for the city or the employees. And, uh, somebody knows who it is and, and I, I, I can, I know it wasn't me. But you, you were perplexed, but you, and you laugh about it, but it's of a serious.
I have, I have a comment.
It's of a serious nature. It was an executive session. It wasn't supposed to be outside these doors. The only alternative is someone was sitting outside the door with a glass and listening. I mean, I, I doubt that happened. But I truly question everybody in here. We don't have to, 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 to agree till, we can agree to disagree or whatever. But when it comes to executive session, shut your mouths outside this council room, please.
Mayor, may I be recognized? I want to.
Yeah, just to, if I may, just, just, um, just add something. And I'm just asking for help. My family is scared. They fear retaliation from the police department. They're in fear of their lives for whatever reason they have. And I'm, I'm very concerned. I'm very concerned about that my family is gonna be targeted because of my actions or whatever I say in council meeting. That they'll be targeted by whomever. And so it's a very legitimate concern. Okay, I'm sorry, it's on, it's a very legitimate concern. I'm just asking my colleagues to help me, please, and just investigate, find out what happened, find out why it got leaked out and who leaked it out. That's all I'm asking you to do. I'm not try, trying to create any controversy. I was the subject of information that was brought to me. I just related this because it was my obligation and responsibility as a mayor to let you know about it. And then you basically blow it off and tell me I'm paranoid. And the, you know, and your recomments and it's so.
Nobody said, saying, did not have authority to take any action. Well, it was just a discussion item. But I would like to be recognized so I can just talk to you some of Jack, Mr. Burton's points.
It's a discussion and action pertaining to the violation.
Now it is, but in the previous, in the executive session, it was just a discussion item, so we had no.
I asked you all guys to take action.
But we, but, but during.
Okay.
But the agenda I did not say action, so we could not.
Everything that's been in the.
Right, but I'm, I'm trying to, I'm trying to, I'm trying to.
Okay.
Explain why no action was taken. Number one, we didn't have authority. Number two, it wasn't on the agenda item to take action. It was just a discussion item. And if I'm correct, Mr. Garza, that we cannot take action unless the agenda item says, take action. It is customary, and Delia will correct me if I'm wrong, there's language after every executive session to take action.
That is correct.
It doesn't say it in the caption for executive session. There were events during the executive session that caused the state council to lose its core. Just like tonight's agenda. Which can be discussed.
And if I may.
Uh, but I, I'd also like to tell Mr. Burton that there are actually eight people that knew about this. No. So there were eight people, there are seven people in this room and one person outside this room that knew about it. Okay?
One more, so, because there were, there were.
Well, at the time, at the time, no, at the time.
We don't know how it was disseminated.
At the time, you were given information by one individual. You brought that to five, six other individuals, so that's eight individuals at the time of that, uh, special council meeting that knew about it. At the time of that, uh, special council meeting that knew about it.
Okay.
You're accusing. Five, six people here that have taken an oath to not share this information. Right, and we are held under penalty of law if we share this information, we all know the risks, we all know the, the. What can happen to us, right, if we violate open, opening meetings act. We can go to jail for that. I don't think Mr. Burton would do that, I don't think Mr. Sellers would do that, I don't think Mr. LaSaya would do that, I know I won't do that. And I really believe that Mr. Valverde would not do that. I don't think you would do that, and I know that Frank Garza would not do that, or the attorney that was representing his firm at the time. So there is one other person that knew about that, that's not under penalty of law. For sharing that information, even if he's at a restaurant or something, or somewhere talking amongst his friends.
That person doesn't even know we had an executive session.
He doesn't have to know there was an executive session, session to share. He knows the incidents that he was reporting, he knows the incidents that were being reported.
See, you're sidestepping the, the seriousness of this, and the seriousness of this is how did our chief.
And let's let, let's, let's let him answer now, we've had our chance to discuss. Unless Mr. Valverde.
I think we still, we still have Mr. Sellers before we go around.
I, I'm just, I just want to clarify, Mayor Rodriguez. That you are asking the city council. Uh, to authorize the funds to hire an outside investigator to investigate this matter. So.
That's not correct. I'm not doing that, David, uh, Mr. Sellers, I'm not asking for that, what I'm asking is to get an independent investigative agency.
Mayor, can you talk into your microphone?
Somebody. Uh, like, I'm asking, um, to get an independent investigator, investigative agency, a law enforcement agency involved. So that they can investigate and find out where the leak occurred, and how did. Our chief of police get the information that we discussed, and he gave me the name of the person that he says he knew. And why did I come to him, that's the most important, that's the key to where the conversation is. Being pushed away from what it really should be, is that, why would he tell me? That he is disappointed in me, because I did not come to him. To complain, or to provide him with the complaint that I did to the city council involving language with the Texas Rangers and the FBI. That is the key, right here, that you can't lose sight of. And so, if you would like to, um. Janahara, Mr. Janahara, you go right ahead.
Now, I was just gonna say something, if I may. Uh, number one, I don't, I don't see why any one. Of us here, the council, will be talking about executive session items. Uh, and number two, there's nineteen police officers, they know each other. And there's one bird singing out there, and as, as long as one officer gets it, everybody gets it. So, I don't think the problem is with the council members here. And, uh, I can understand your concern. But I know the council members didn't leak anything out.
Yeah, let's hope not, but the investigation will determine that.
Right.
It's somehow, somebody got it out, we don't know who.
All right, thank you.
Chief, go right ahead.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, so, just, just want to clarify some of the things, you, you mentioned a safety concern. And then, um, items that were divulged when you first made the statement. I, I addressed you that day because as we were coming in, uh, checking mail, I think you were doing the same, or you had a meeting with Code. Uh, it was down here on the first floor, you asked me about the reserve program. I went on to let you know everything that we're investigating right now as far as cases throughout the department. Uh, then, as I was leaving, uh. I said, hey, there's a little something, and if I can just depict a little something on my, uh, it's my threat intimidation altercation where you, you threatened to fire me. Uh, you actually said, well, let me tell you a little bit of something, your days are numbered as Mr. Pedales is leaving. Uh, my days were numbered as well, obviously you didn't like the interaction that we had, so, um, the, the main part of this. Uh, I like the way you tell your version of it, and then there's the factual version. Uh, if I would have known that we were gonna go into this, it's all we, uh, captured on our video, our justice center cameras. Uh, there was an employee also that captured it, I, I had an officer that was upstairs, he activated his body cam video. So as of right now, I think we have, uh, nine complaints that are in on the interaction that we had both together. Now, um, I think I responded to you and I, I told you, I'm swamped with a lot of stuff, but eventually I'll get to the reserve program. Also something that just popped up that I'm not liking, but when you get a chance, I'd like to talk to you about it because I want to filter out. The rumors versus the facts, something about the Texas Rangers and the FBI being contacted about cases or something. I really wish you would have come to me about that, but that's fine. Like I told you from the beginning, I'm very transparent and open. If this is true, I'm not sure if it's coming from a resident or a disgruntled employee, something about cases filed. Not filed, but that's fine, I have everything ready and prepared, I thought we had a good relationship. From there, I mean, there's a three-page document that I've submitted to Mr. Pedales, I'm not sure when you're gonna receive all of the complaints, but. From there, you didn't like the conversation, and as I've seen, I, I, I told you that I investigate cases. All the cases that you've had, uh, with either council members, uh, people from EDC, P and Z. Um, I, I know and I see what you've done, I've tried to stay. As a mediator in between and take both sides of, of the situations. Uh, you accuse me of taking it personal from bringing it up to you, and then. You made it very clear in my statement here, and also, like I said, what's on video, uh, and the cell phone cameras and our body cam videos. That, um. Uh, that I was upset with you. And I corrected you, and I said, Mayor, I'm not upset with you, I just said that I was, if it's true, I mean, I don't know if it's true or not, but we could talk about it later. You kept the door open to the hallway where all of our employees could hear that. So, you said later in our conversation, as nine of the people said, why was the mayor yelling at you? So, because of this, me bringing it up to you. You made it very clear. That you were gonna get down to the bottom of this and figure out how I knew about. Uh, 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 information that was, uh, divulged and was taken from a, an executive session meeting. So right then and there, Mayor, you're a private investigator, I've been investigated for going on twenty years, I've worked every department here for you. Not to include the Bear County Sheriff's Department, so with that, and also cases with your informant. I'm almost positive without getting a statement from him, oh, he's been harassing our fire department, uh, he's been harassing. Our new employees that have nothing to do with any of this, I'm positive, even with me sending you. In a meeting that we had behind closed doors, you asked for the Texas Ranger in our region. Which is Sherry Irwin, and you asked for the FBI director, and I gave that to you, I sent it to you on. August twenty second. So I don't understand how. You took the conversation that we had, but the best thing to show what you do. And if council agrees, and our city manager, let's show the videos. And exactly what you stated tonight will show the type of person that you are, because you're. You're, you're basically coming at me, and you're, you're, you're crediting my credibility, I've done nothing but. Try to help the city and be transparent from what we've been through, through the years past. I've learned through our chiefs that I've worked under here, and you told me, after our meetings. After our lunch that we had, that we were trying to build a relationship, that it had nothing to do with our relationships, it wasn't personal. And that you had an obligation for the best interest of the city that you were gonna. I guess, called another agency, well, by all means, call the agency. I have nothing to hide, I'll give them the key to my office, but I also let you know too. I've always been transparent, and I wish you would have come to me, because I would give you all any information, like I've always have, to you and council. So, uh, call me into the executive session, whatever you need, but obviously you made it very clear before we ended that meeting. I was gonna contact my attorney, so were you, because my days were numbered. And that, um, you lacked all confidence in me, so. Uh, I can see now, you, you just don't have any trust in me, and or our police department, as in our second meeting when you were mayor. That we had a conversation outside till about twelve at midnight, that you just wanted to trust me. And I'd never understood that, remember I asked you about that, like, what, what have I done, or what has our police department ever done? For you to say that, please don't say that out in the open, because it's gonna bring a question mark. So, Mayor, by all means, I don't take anything personal. This city is my heart, I've worked here, I'm about to retire, I, I still have a lot in me. You're just a bump in the road, honestly, to tell you the truth. Uh, I get my direction, I think that made you angry from council and my city manager, you made it very clear that you oversee me. I've never been disrespectful to anybody, check my personnel file. So, if you still need us to hand you over any case files, uh, I had no knowledge of any female. Uh, I, I don't know where that came from, if, if the lieutenant's having sex with a female. By all means, if y'all want us to look into that, we have security cameras on the justice center, we can search back. As far as the cameras go back, I think it's seventy-two days, so you let me know, council, with my city manager, how you want to proceed with this.
Well, just so the council knows, and so you will know. What I told you was I don't have an obligation to report anything to you, especially if I feel. And especially it's been reported to me, that you may have been involved. And the administrator may have been involved, that's why they were not allowed to be in the executive session. Okay, so if allegations are being made to me. If they're saying you're involved in this cover-up or whatever allegations that they're making. Then, by all means, don't you realize that I can't come to you? Because you may be part of that, and it won't be proven until an investigation is, is, is conducted. So, so I'm not gonna come to you and tell you, chief, guess what? If somebody reported this and they're saying you were involved, they were saying the city administrator has knowledge about this. You want me to come to you instead of going to an independent agency? That's why I went to the city council to request an independent investigation, to prove if these allegations are true or not. So, that's why I couldn't come to you, and that's why I told you, don't take it personal, you did take it personally, you're lying to everybody here because you did.
I didn't, I didn't say I was quitting on you or retiring or that day, you're the one that threatened me.
No, nobody threatened you.
But at the end of this, Mayor, launch the investigation, I'll even give you some good credible sources, because there's three Rangers that are assigned to my area.
Allegation.
No, no, that's fine, but where you're getting your source from.
It doesn't make a difference.
I know, you're getting it from a disgruntled employee.
No, it doesn't make a difference.
And I have the supporting documents.
Was, but.
Right here.
But what I'm saying, chief.
Because I know that's, that's how you work.
Chief, no, that's not how I work.
Yes, sir.
I don't approach anybody and you're making, see, you're making false accusations.
No, you're making false accusations.
No, no.
Mayor, let, let's call a point, let's call, let's call a point of order, I understand that.
Sir, all I'm telling you is that, as mayor, it was my responsibility to report these things. I didn't seek it out, I didn't go out and look for this man, I didn't go out or this person. I didn't seek any of this information.
No, sir.
This person came to me, okay, and I have another one here, I want to give you, that you need to investigate.
Yes, sir.
There's another complaint against one of your officers.
Yes, sir.
There's, there's a thumb drive in here.
Okay.
There's a letter attached to it.
Okay.
I don't seek this information.
That officer signs?
I'm not offer, I, I don't, I'm not gonna tell you who it is, I'm gonna give it to you so you can investigate.
I've already investigated, if that's the letter, because I got a letter that looks exactly like that.
But see, you didn't even tell the council about it, you didn't tell anybody about it.
I briefed my city manager.
You didn't brief us.
He's not responsible to do that.
So all I'm saying is that.
That was unfounded, if that's the officer that I mentioned, that's unfounded, it's, it's not even with our police department.
Point is this, I'm not the solicitor of this kind of information, okay? It gets brought to my attention, and I, as the mayor of the city of Balcony Heights, have an obligation.
Yes, sir.
Under the local government code, that I'm supposed to provide this information to my fellow council members. To take action, to take whatever action necessary to address these things, now I'm coming to you for help. I'm talking to you in an executive session, I consult with our city attorney as to the proper venue, how to do it. The proper manner and how to do it, I follow everything to the T of what I'm being instructed to do. And now you want to persecute me, because I am reporting it to you guys. And telling you that I'm scared of the safety of my family. Of any retaliation for what I discussed under my duties as a mayor, then on top of that. On top of that, I get a confrontation with you, which is not absolutely true, and we're gonna find out, like you say.
Watch the video.
But it doesn't make a difference, sir.
Yes, sir.
Because, it doesn't make a difference, because of the fact.
So you're just worried about your family's safety.
You're changing.
I have to worry about everybody's families.
You're changing the narrative.
Not just your family.
True intent, that's what I brought this up for, and what I brought this up for is to ask, how did you get this information?
And I told you on video, Officer Caneely.
You said his name, as that I know, I know who you got this information from. And I didn't tell you his name, and I didn't reveal his name right now, and I'm not confirming it. Because, I just, rather not, because now I'm gonna talk to the Texas Rangers, and let them know. And let them investigate and find out what happened.
Give you two more numbers.
No, I don't need them.
On top of the one that I sent you.
Probably, I'm, I don't know if you, I don't know what's, what to do other than, I'll just report it to the authorities, by all means.
Let's do it.
We'll just report it to the authorities, and so, that's all I'm asking for, I'm asking for the fact that. If indeed that we have a problem, it needs to be addressed.
It does.
And the problem is, is a leak from the executive session has occurred.
I, and I don't understand why you're stuck on your council members, and that's.
I'm not saying it's a council member.
Private investigator and you're all private investigation.
Occurred, and we didn't have an investigation to determine where that leak went, where did it come from? Okay, so that's basically all it is.
May I be recognized?
Now, go ahead, uh, Matt Frank, go ahead.
Two things I just wanted to point out, one, um, as you and I had discussed, Mayor, um, you could have proceeded with filing a complaint. Without bringing it to the council, I know you wanted council assistance, but one thing I wanted to point out. In number thirteen, it does say. Any council member may only be removed from office in accordance with chapter twenty one, subchapter B of the local government code. Subchapter B, chapter twenty one, requires a petition to be filed with the court for removal. Misconduct is one of the reasons, and the reason thirteen's there, is there. Is because if a council member or any elected official leaked information from an executive session. That's a showing of misconduct, and that's appropriate for a petition to be filed with the court. Council has no authority to remove any of its elected officials, only the court. May remove an elected official.
I'm quite aware of that, yes.
May I be recognized, Mayor?
I read that today.
So what I'm saying is that.
May I be recognized?
Information has already been disseminated to the whole public, all right, so it's not a secret anymore. It's not a secret anymore. So me discussing it right now is only reiterating what I've been told, and I've been knowledgeable what's out in the public. And somebody disseminated that information after my confrontation with Chief Janahara. Because the first thing I hear that it's coming from the mall people over there. When y'all went over there to go do your situation with the emergency center or whatever happened over there with, whatever y'all were there for. So, already the information is being disseminated all over the place. I hear it here, and so, in other words, it's not a secret anymore, everyone knows what happened.
May I be recognized?
The point of order is, is that it doesn't matter, it's been disseminated already, my safety is at danger, my family's safety is at danger.
Go ahead, can I be recognized, please, thank you, so I do want to point out that.
Say I had it before you, will you want to go first? Okay, go ahead.
Thank you, so I do want to point out that the chief of police does not report to the city council, he reports to. The city administrator, so any personnel issues he has, he will do investigations, and he will submit that information to the. To the city administrator, and they will take action necessary based on their experience and their judgment.
We're not talking about him, we're talking.
But you're talking, you're talking about that file right there.
We're talking, we're talking about, we're talking about the leak of information from an executive session, that's what. See, that's why the narrative is changing to the chief.
I'm just saying, you brought that up.
Yes.
Not the chief. Also, I also want to point out that you're more willing to believe that the city council people here, again, who are.
I'm willing to say, get an investigation to find out. That's my whole point.
You're, you're.
Find out.
You, you keep saying, there was a leak, there was a leak, there was a leak, so you are insisting that one of us.
No, I'm saying.
Leak that information, knowing the consequences, knowing the consequence.
It was only us.
Can I please speak without being interrupted, sir, you're, you're actually, you're actually in violation of rubber rules.
Go ahead, sir.
And you've been doing it all night long.
I'm so sorry, I apologize.
Thank you, I have the floor.
Okay, go ahead, sir.
You, you insist on accusing a council member or multiple council members of violating the open meetings act. And, uh, rule twelve of our code of conduct, um, knowing that we face jail time for that. You would rather believe that the worst of what any of us versus a person that has nothing to lose could go out there and spread rumors. And so you want us to investigate that.
Let me know so I can re, re, re.
Thank you.
Address your.
Mayor.
So that's not really true, um, councilman science, that's not true. And the, the fact is, I'm asking for an investigation. For the safety of my family and for my sake. And I am asking for an investigation to be conducted to find out where that information came out, because it was only the city attorney and ourselves in that meeting. So by whatever manner, it doesn't matter to me, it was leaked out. So if you want to fixate on the fact that I'm focusing on the council members, I'm not. And you're erroneously saying that, because that's not what I'm saying. You always twist my words around every single time. You want to turn it into something that I'm doing wrong, when look at the whole picture. I did nothing wrong. I brought it to your attention. I brought it. No, you know, let me finish. Like, you want me to finish? You wanted to finish, let me finish. Okay, you follow your own rules, like you say. So the thing is, is that when I bring this to your attention, I'm following the rules. I'm trying to bring it to the attention of the city council to be discussed so that it can be protected under the executive session. And then when that gets violated, it's like Councilman Burton says, where does the trust factor come in from that point on of what we discuss? Then there's no sense in having an executive session anymore, because somebody's eavesdropping or somebody is disseminating that information. Now, I'm not saying that it was you. I'm not saying it was Mr. Lasse. I'm not saying it was Mr. Sellers. I'm not saying it was Mr. Burton. What I'm saying, our city attorney, what I'm saying, or Mr. Valverde, I'm not saying it's any of you guys. What I'm saying is that the information got leaked, and we need to find out because the integrity of the executive session has been compromised.
May I reply to that?
Yes, go ahead.
So again, you keep saying the information had to have come out of this executive session. You're saying exactly my point. You're saying that there was a leak from the executive session. There were only seven people in that room. It was the six of us and the city attorney. So you, by definition, are accusing us, one of us, or multiple of us, of violating that and leaking the information from the executives, executive session. My point is that there were eight people that knew that. Seven people faced criminal conduct charges for violating that. One person did not, and you insist on believing that it was one of the people that could go to jail or face criminal conduct charges versus one person has nothing to do with it. You have been saying that.
I said can be removed for office.
You, you have been saying that, well, Open Meetings Act, we can get.
I didn't say.
We can be criminally charged.
See how you twist my words around?
You didn't say, but I'm telling you, that's one of the, that's one of the consequences of us violating those rules. So.
That's your opinion. That's your definition. That's your narrative.
That's the Texas municipal league.
I don't know, sir. I just know that I, I just told you that the reason I put it, I wrote the title. I wrote the number. I told you what I was complaining about, and that's it.
I suggest you reread the Open Meetings Act and all that information again.
Somebody to do something.
Again, you, you accuse us of violating that Code of Conduct.
Accusing you of anything.
You are. You're saying that there was a leak, definitively stating that there was a leak.
We don't know where.
From the executive council, and I'll yield to Mr. Sanders.
We could talk about this till the blue turns over, but I'm going to make a motion to deny this request.
So you don't want to help me and to find out what happened and who leaked the information? Okay.
Mayor.
Then let's have a second to that motion. Do we have a second?
Before we make a motion, I'd like to make a comment.
Okay, there's already motion, so let's get a second.
Second.
Okay, we have a second by Councilman Lasse. Any further discussions?
Mayor. Mayor. The city attorney has already told you several times that you can make that on your own.
And I will.
So why did we spend an hour on this?
Because you didn't spend an hour on it.
You could have done this from the beginning.
I needed to make sure the public knows what happened, so that they get the truth.
You've made your point, and then you've already said that you divulge information that happened on executive session.
I'm scared for my family, sir. You may not be, but I'm scared for my family.
Information from executive session.
Already disseminated. It's been out in the public already.
So you're, so you're agreeing that you divulge information. Thank you.
I'm not agreeing to anything. Just you, it's just incredible that you won't take.
I'd like to call the question.
Something that is seriously detrimental to my family. So you called the question. We have the vote, Councilman Valverde. Yes, Councilman.
Before we vote, I'm a little confused because the agenda item says discussion, action pertaining to calling for an immediate investigation. So who is, who are we calling for an immediate investigation?
Yeah. And we have that vote on the table right now to deny it.
Okay.
And so I can still go on my own and call the Texas Rangers and tell them what happened. Give them all the information that it was given to me and let it fall where it falls. Let them investigate and find out what is happening.
Okay.
Okay, so the questions have been called. We can't have any more discussion.
Mister.
We can't have any more. You called the question. So you called the votes. So you can't have any more discussion. Don't you know the rules?
Yes, I know the rules, but apparently you don't either because you went back to Mr. Science.
Okay, good. Mr. Valverde, yeah, Councilman Science, Councilman Lasse, Councilman Sellers, Councilman Burton.
Abstain.
Okay, Councilman Burton has abstained. We have four with one abstained vote. Item number thirteen, discussion and action instruct mayor and council members to follow the council relations policy. May not direct city staff without authorization from city administrator. Mayor and council members may not ask or instruct staff to meet away from the city hall unless given prior approval by the city administrator. Mayor and council members notify the city administrator of the reason to visit staff. It is recommended that city administrator and city staff have at least twenty-four hours' notice of any such meeting that is requested unless there is an emergency situation. Councilman Signs.
Thank you. So this stems from your, your continued direction to city staff and creating an environment that's not conducive to, to good morale. So the council relation policy says that the city administrator has direction over all city staff. With the, the only people that we have purview over are the city, the municipal officers. That'd be the city attorney, the city secretary, and the city administrator. All others fall under the direction of the city administrator, so we cannot give direction to them. So just this item is just to ensure that we all are aware of that, and we all follow that.
Finish. You're done with your statement?
Yes.
Okay. So, Councilman Burton.
Frank, this is in our council relation packet, as, as he's proposed. I'm making a motion to approve.
Okay, second, anybody second to that motion?
I'll second it.
Okay, we have a second and a further discussion. So the only thing I want to bring up is on August the fifth, twenty twenty-four, at nine twenty-six AM, there is a email from Juan Lasse to Floyd Messick. Mr. Lasse, please click on the review comments on icon on the upper right to view the answer. Let me know if any other questions or concerns. Floyd, please see the attach. I just have a few simple questions. That is evidence right there of Mr. Lasse directly talking to Mr. Messick in violation of the previous rules that were in place, and now the current rules that you want to put in place.
This was Mr. Messick reaching out to us, asking if we had questions.
Mister, Mister Juan Lasse on August the fourth, twenty twenty-four, at eleven fifty-four AM, PM, sends a message to Mr. Floyd Messick. He says, Mr. Floyd, just a few questions. Please see the attach. I have a few simple questions. Thank you, Juan Lasse. So how does that work for him, but it doesn't work for us?
Mayor, the policy is instructing, for example, Mr. Lasse said, Mr. Messick, I want you to move those dollars from this account of this account. That's a violation. Asking questions by the council members is not prohibited. Now, what I would recommend, and I don't know whether this email copied the city administrator, because if it copied the city administrator, he's copying, he is keeping the city administrator informed of his questions to the department director. What the policy is, that the mayor or council cannot instruct and direct a city employee, that there is no prohibition in asking questions.
So that leaves it for items that you have to discuss with the city administrator. There may be some items of concern that you have, and you have to instruct them, and then that prohibits under the powers and duties of the mayor to oversee the conduct of every subordinate individual or every subordinate official of the city.
You don't have that authority.
It's under the local government code, sir, under twenty-two oh one.
For the city administrator, city secretary, and city attorney.
Yes, sir. I have read it.
Yeah.
And the council, and the council, and the council has hired, the council has adopted ordinances that is Miss City Administrator oversees the day-to-day.
But you can't supersede the local government code.
Well, we'll disagree with the interpretation of the local government code.
Mayor, if I may.
Mister Mayor, I think I was signed up for this item, if I may speak.
Right ahead, Lamar.
First of all, I'd like to say, having served on this council for eighteen years, and having been the Finance Committee Chairman for six, sixteen of those eighteen, some of these guys that served with me would get chastised by me in meetings for not having discussions with department heads and asking questions that they were going to ask in the meeting. I've always been taught, I was a military man for eight years, two months, two days, and two hours, but who's counting? I was a military man. I was always told, when I got, when I went to brief a colonel or a general, I talked to people ahead of time to say, what's going on? What's this number here about? What is this fifty thousand right here I'm seeing on my report? Tell me about it. Give me a pre-brief, right? Why did I do that? Why did I do that? I'll tell you why I did it, because I wanted to conserve the time of all my colleagues in the meeting because I could answer ninety percent of my questions. Ninety percent of my questions. You remember that, Jack? I could answer ninety percent of my questions by talking to a committee, I mean, a, a, a division or department head. When I did ask questions of them, I would send a copy to the city administrator and the mayor, both, so I did not have any appearance of violating the council relations policy. This policy started in two thousand nine. This gentleman over here, and this gentleman over here in twenty fourteen spruced it up a little bit. Is that about right? And, and the reason we did it is to, to avoid these conflicts between council, the mayor, and, and staff. I think it's an excellent policy to follow. There's a reason why they do it. We do it because we don't want to grandstand in a meeting. We want to ask things ahead of time because we can get those things answered ahead of time. We will be out of here before ten o'clock. That ain't gonna happen tonight. Thank you.
Mayor, if I may.
So the, the problem with that, Mister Gillian, is that.
Mayor, can you speak into your microphone? Can you speak into your microphone?
Administrator do not have any oversight.
Mayor, okay.
Can you speak into your microphone?
Mayor, we need you to speak into your microphone, please.
Okay, so what it lends is the fact that there's no oversight for the city administrator. He operates, that's the downside to that. The downside to that, that, that particular situation is that very easily the city administrator can just do whatever he wants with no oversight whatsoever. And that's the problem, because no one is checking on the behavior or the activities of the city administrator, whenever he takes his days off, you know, in, in, in all kinds of other things that could occur. So there's always needs to be, there's always need, there's always a need for a check-in balance. Now, I very seldom come to city hall. I very seldom have any communication with any employees of the city here. It's only when I come in to check my mail. I don't have any other desire to be here, any other reason to be here, unless I have a meeting with Mister Peralis, our former city administrator. And when we came in to officer, you realized that we had no orientation whatsoever by Mister Peralis?
You've told me that already.
No, I didn't.
Yes, you did, in a meeting.
Did, but I'm reminding you. We had no.
I don't need to be reminded. I have a good mind.
Okay, I'm not trying to argue with Mister, Mister Gillian. All I'm trying to say is that there was no orientation for us, okay? And I have a letter that I can produce here where I tried and I attempted to talk to Mister Peralis. And I attempted to reason with him and to ask him, sir, is there a way we can sit down and talk? Is there a way we can talk about, and I even approached our city attorney, and I said, I need to approach, I would like to set up a time and meet with you to discuss, hopefully we can clarify our duties and roles with the city. I know that we've had some disagreements regarding our roles that I think could be resolved with a meeting between the two of us.
I stand by my comments, and I.
Yeah.
And, and I, I'll let you talk some more if you'd like to.
Told him, I said, I respect your position and experience with municipalities, but I also ask you respect to be mutual, and you recognize my authority under state law. After our meeting, there are outstanding issues that have not been resolved. I will recommend we call it special meeting. And so, you know, I just tried to reach out to him and to talk to him, and he refused. He said, I respectfully decline the invitation for a meeting.
Mayor, may I be recognized?
So, you know, I've been trying to just work with the city administrator or anybody else, and all of these issues that come up to bringing you to have this, that you don't want us to communicate with the city administrator without a twenty-four hour notice is just really ludicrous. I mean, it's just not really sound. I mean, why would you want to do that? Avoid who, so that we don't have the opportunity to convey or communicate with our city administrator?
May I be recognized?
I just don't see the logic in it.
May I be recognized?
Yes, go right ahead.
Thank you. So our city staff are very busy with their day-to-day jobs. They don't have time to just meet with us on, on a whim. So it'd be good to have an advance notice. That way we can schedule meetings. Now, the city administrator does report to the city council, so he does have oversight, okay? I also do have access to email, and I looked at the email that you sent, that you referenced earlier from August fourth, and Mister Lasse did copy the city administrator on it. So it did fall within the, the guidelines that Mister Garza referred to.
Okay.
So that I call the question.
We have, we have the item on the, on the thing, so let's go ahead and call vote. Councilman Valverde.
Yay.
Councilman Signs.
Yeah.
Councilman Lasse.
Yes.
Sellers.
Yeah.
Councilman Burton.
Abstain.
Okay, so we have four with one abstain. Okay, so let's move on. Fourteen department reports in Q and A, Police Department, Fire Department, Community Development, Economic Development, and Public Affairs. Go right ahead, whatever departments would like to come forward.
I'll go first, mayor. The only thing we have to give an update to is we had a resignation, one of our corporals, this past Friday, September twentieth. It's in lieu of something that Mister Garza was helping us with, that was completed the day before Thursday. So Friday, we received his resignation. Other than that, I'm open to answer any questions on our report.
Are we allowed to know anything about the resignation? Is there a reason why or anything?
I will just state for the, for the public that it was a resignation in lieu of termination.
And what was reason for in lieu of termination?
As I said, we can discuss that privately.
Okay, so you want to discuss that in an executive session? Is that correct? In the executive session? Okay, can we discuss it in private then, you and I, or?
Okay. I was just going to say that I believe that goes under the city administrator to relate to us whenever it, it needs to be done. Not, not, not us get, get involved.
I'll discuss it with our city attorney.
And then the city administrator will bring it to us. So we can just continue following the protocols. Thank you.
Any other departments? Fire department, do we have anything, sir?
I got nothing to add unless there's any questions.
Thanks to your team for making that fire, by the way.
Yes, sir.
Okay, we'll put you in contact with the department on it. Any other departments? Community Development?
If anybody has any questions for community development.
Nothing at all?
I don't have anything else other than what's on the report.
All right. City administrator, do we have anything?
No, I don't have anything at this time.
Miss Delia, anything from your department? Anything new?
No.
Okay. Anybody else? Miss Spence? Anybody? Nobody? Okay, great. Okay, so let's move on to the next item on the agenda. There's no action item on that. Nothing from Economic Development and Public Affairs, nothing. All right, announcement and comments and requests by mayor and city council members. I have no announcements.
I have an announcement, mayor, if I, if I may.
Okay, go ahead, Mister Valverde.
I'd just like to make an announcement that I have noticed that more and more junk vehicles are accumulated in our community. And in my opinion, it's getting worse, and as time goes on, I don't know when this issue is going to be addressed, but, but we have to do something.
Yes, sir.
And let's see, another one is that the last council meeting, I presented some ideas on how we can, or how we might be able to save money for the city budget. I have not seen or heard any input from anyone on these ideas, and, and that's okay. I'm sure you have your own ideas. But I'm going to see if I can get some more information together for the next meeting and share it with you guys. Thank you. I'm gonna see if I can get some more information together for the next meeting and share it with you guys. Thank you.
Anyone else?
I have a question on that, on that point. Mr. Garza, could Mr. Valverde send that to the city secretary or the city administrator to disperse to the city council members? That way we can have a have record of that and read it and be prepared for the next meeting?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Thank you. Mr. Valverde, could you?
Yes, I will.
Thank you. I I do want to say something. I just want to bring up a couple of events that are coming up in October for our city. We have National Nine Out on October first and on October thirteenth, we have the Sixth Hispanic Trails Cultural Festival. That'll be at the Wonderland of the Americas.
I had, Mayor.
Yes, Councilman Lassia.
And just last last month, we had a real quick meeting, so we didn't get the opportunity to acknowledge the efforts and work that Mr. Peralis had done for us as a city administrator. And in my opinion, he was a wealth of information. He helped us through some really, really difficult times. Some of us did not agree with him. Some of us really did not agree with him. But at the end of the day, he had some really good ideas. He had excellent leadership. And he understood, knew his role, and he made sure that we, as council, that got to work with him, understood our our role. So just, I'd like to publicly acknowledge the service that Mr. Peralis provided to the city. I unfortunately did not bring a copy of the accomplishments that he made in the course of the two years that he was here, but I'll try and make some available to whoever wants them. And he has a list of several items that were accomplished during his time here working with the present council and and the previous council. So thank you. Well, here, Mr. Mr. Sines is gonna read it.
So a list of accomplishments that Mr. Peralis provided was we replaced a warrant contract program with the existing provider, saving the city approximately a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars. Eliminated the photo enforcement position once the program terminated, resulting in annualized savings of about ninety thousand dollars. Approved modifications to the employee health insurance, resulting in annualized savings of about two hundred thousand dollars without major disruptions to employee benefits. Terminated the janitorial contract and substituted the service with a part-time employee, resulting in annualized savings of about twenty-five thousand dollars. We implemented a process for utilization utilization of the city's legal resources that resulted in substantial savings. Through May of twenty of twenty twenty-four, the city's monthly invoices from our legal services provider since October of twenty-three, twenty twenty-three were averaging nineteen hundred and seventy-five dollars. However, since May of twenty twenty-four, our legal fees for general law services have been headed in the wrong direction, averaging forty-eight hundred and sixty-seven dollars monthly, which is almost three thousand dollars more per month. Now, the Fire Department repurposed a pickup truck to a rapid response vehicle to improve response times and reduce maintenance costs on the large fire equipment. Provided the police and fire chiefs a car allowance to allow for their city-issued vehicles to be placed into the rotation for regular patrol duty, resulting in decreasing maintenance costs for vehicles. Upon retirement, downgraded the public works supervisor position to a maintenance position, resulting in annualized savings of approximately twenty-five thousand dollars. Upon retirement, the EDC director, a position was frozen with the intent to hire permanent city administrator with EDC experience, annualized savings of approximately a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars. We enforced the special permits, special events permits fees to capture revenues, offset sign city expenditures associated with coordination and inspection of all city special events. We increased the rental registration fees for all multifamily developments, offset increased costs. We improved our CDBG grant applications. So they have been, that have been awarded fifty percent and seventy percent levels, which is resulting in substantial savings to the city's capital investments. Completed multiple street projects, Pleasant Drive, Leisure Drive, Crestview Lane Phase One has been completed. Crestview Lane Two is gonna commence in late fall and Crestview Three, the CDBG application has been submitted. Replaced the full roof of the Justice Center. Hillcrest is pending bond authorization in May of twenty twenty-five. And then Economic Development, many new companies have been coming in filling some of the areas in the Wonder Theater or the Wonderland property. A bunch of new restaurants, the Siesta Motel has been demolished and replaced with the Club Car Wash. Texan Medical Center has undertaken significant expansions. And that is essentially what he put. So, but the team has been very busy and he said he's grateful, extremely grateful with the opportunity to have been parts of such a dedicated dedicated group of public servants.
Hey, great. Thank you very much for that brief. So I'd like to read a couple of things. These are comments made by citizens to me. Mayor Rodriguez, I want to congratulate you on the brilliant explanation of issues facing the city of Balcony Heights in the September twenty twenty-four issue of the city newsletter. Not only the issues clearly outlining your state of the city address, you provided a clear pathway to correct the issues and you also addressed a sustainable pathway forward. Now that's leadership. Even Stevie Wonder can see we have a problem. I can see why the old regime was reluctant to release the reins of power. I can only imagine how things would have currently looked at if that old crowd had stayed in power another two years. They had to go. Deficit spending is not sustainable and neither is rob Peter to pay Paul. Process of financial management. That's what got us in this mess to begin with. That falls on the city manager and the former mayor. The budgetary shortfall has their name all over it. Had this happened in San Antonio, the city manager would have been fired for fiduciary mismanagement. His excessive salary wreaks a misconduct. I can see why there is so much angst and anger over the last election. They were afraid that this stuff, the issues in your state of the address, were going to come to the light. Budgetary cuts are needed and no one is going to be happy about it. The city reminds everyone that the good of the whole city is far greater than the good of any individual or entity in Balcony Heights. Thank you for being bold enough to push the city charter forward and defend the survival of our city. Bravo. I have another statement from a citizen. Mayor Rodriguez, I want to let you know that I'm proud and happy with the way you're handling the council meetings and keeping control. This is a big change from the way it was had been handled in the past. I hate the idea that most people such as former council members and many other people have a negative opinion of you. Be that as it may, I'm a firm believer that everyone deserves a chance, especially when a person is willing to make changes for the best interests of our community and take on a position knowing the city is in trouble financially. The past is history. We can't change anything. What matters is the future. And I'm confident that you will take care of business to make improvements in our community. I know we have difficult and hard decisions to make. Another problem was I saw that our former city administrators seemed to always take the easiest way out by not facing confrontation and keeping people and the former mayor allowed it. We really need to consider cutting down on some salaries. We evaluate the step increase program. The community developed director position should be reclassified as a public works director, director, and the salary should be less. These are just observations from citizens that have come forward to basically just tell me of the good job that I'm doing. So I just wanted to bring forward and news to the community that these are citizens that have written to me with comments regarding of how I have been conducting myself in meetings. So with that in mind, do we have anything else to discuss?
Where were we?
We were on, we were on agenda items, a request announcement by city, my mayor and city councilman. Now we have an announcement by the city administrator.
I I thought we were still on announcements by
Yeah, we're still on fifteen.
Yeah.
I I attended the the Baskin Elementary, or actually it was the Hillcrest residence meeting that was held at Baskin Elementary. And Councilwoman District Seven spoke and Ron Mregel spoke, our felony judge for Bear County. And you know, I I I sat there and was like a sponge and kind of soaked things in and and they experienced the problems we experience aside from the our our, you know, disagreement with each other. But they're they're just like us. They they suffer from roads. They suffer from animals, cats, dogs, possums, skunks, all that, speeding, problem properties and everything. And it was really just a great meeting. I also wanted to acknowledge that coming up at Wonderland of the Americas Mall on October the twelfth, I I believe it is for the, they're gonna have a Halloween contest up there, the costume contest. And I'm gonna serve as one of the judges. I I think Mayor Rodriguez, are you, are you?
Yeah.
So if you feel so inclined, come up and and be ghoulish, if you will. And that's all I I really want to say.
Okay, any other announcements? City administrator? We'll move on to number sixteen then, if we have no other announcements.
Just
I think he's getting ready to talk.
I'm sorry?
Just one announcement is that currently we're down one public works person. He's out for a medical issue. And so just be aware that you see something slipping, just let us know and we'll try to direct our one person that we have. But I understand that he's by himself now.
Sure.
And and so we got to make sure he stays safe. But I just want to let everybody know that we we're down one right now. He's just, he's out.
Was he hurt on the job?
He hasn't left.
Did he get hurt on the job?
I don't want to go any further because because I don't want to discuss.
Okay, that's fine. No problem. Just curious.
That's all.
All right. So if that's all we have, let's move on to item.
Mayor.
Yes. Yes, sir. Yes, sir. Go right ahead.
I just want to announce gratitude for Delia. This is actually her last council meeting. And I've been, I've been here twenty-two years as your city attorney. She's been here the entire time, keeping everything running smoothly, and I'm gonna miss working with Delia. I just
I'm gonna miss y'all too.
Blush. Okay, so let's go to, I'm sorry? Um, sure, go right ahead. Is it okay, Mr. Garza? Okay. All right. Go ahead. Yes, go ahead.
So I I I see everything going on here and I'm impressed there's been more order today than there has been in the past. But first I wanted to say that when officers being investigated, having our contracts, we have to be made aware and we have the right to face our accuser. We can't be private. Can't have a private investigation on an officer without them being aware. That's the first I wanted to say. The second thing, the idea, I know y'all voted already to freeze the sergeant position. We're drowning upstairs. We're completely drowning. And and each of us is backed up three hundred plus cases. I'm working my ass out in cases. My guys are, I'm sorry, let me say.
Just gonna say briefing from the
I just want to propose freeze a CID position and it's fine. We'll rise above any situation given to us. But right now I have this guy doing the job of a sergeant, which he's working outside his pay grade. I'm trying to share the responsibilities with him, which is hard. It's a lot. We're, it's, there's a lot weighing on us. We freeze a position remote. I mean, I don't know if it's too late to to bring that back. I just feel that it's an unreasonable ask. Him continue doing that job. Can't follow me completely. It's just, just handling the property alone is the job of two full-time employees that we don't have. So I just want to urge that we take that into consideration. Guys work their butts off, to use the other word.
It's not too bad.
These guys work hard and honestly, even if I have to take a cut in my salary to go to his, I'm fine with that. These guys work hard and they work hard for all of you. They don't, he doesn't deserve. Man, he's done with a smile every day. He has a complaint. And I feel horrible looking at him every day, doing the same job every day with with no end and here that position is frozen because that was something he's been looking forward to. He's worked his butt off for the last several years to be that person. That's all I wanted to say. I wanted to just put that in your, that seed in your, in your heads. All right, I appreciate you letting me talk.
Okay, thank you very much, Lieutenant Ortiz. So we're finished with that item. Any request from the mayor councilor will be placed on a future council agenda, number seventeen.
Mayor, may I be recognized?
Yes, you can.
So I don't know if this is a city council type of thing, but I I do want to ensure that the we direct the interim city administrator to be in the search for a new director of community development to replace, to fill that role since he is officially retired from that and he's acting as the interim city director or city administrator. Is that a council item or is that?
Well, you can place it on the future council meeting for discussion like we did when we originally addressed that situation back four months ago. It was on, so just put it on the agenda. Just do an edge, do a a council request, put it on there.
Yeah, that's what I just said.
Yeah, so just ask Delia, whoever, Delia won't be here anymore, but Lisa, just have Lisa put it on the agenda and she'll she'll just do the request. Anything else? Okay, so now let's move on to announcements. I'm sorry, we were just did announcements and the comments and requests. Yes, Councilman Burden.
I'd like to get on the agenda. I'm gonna be the squeaky wheel here, but park lights. I receive, I received, or I should say the city received a donation from a business owner. And again, well, I I'm not gonna get into the splitting hairs with it. Just, I'd like to see the park lights.
Okay, just put it on the agenda and we'll get it and discuss it. All right, so now we're finished down with, let's go into executive session. Finally.
Resist, 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 please.
Absolutely. Okay, so the personnel matters regarding police chief in the police department is to discuss whatever confidential information. And so however he'd like to proceed is fine. It's not a complaint against him or anything like that. That's, it's regarding departmental anything having to do with the any complaints, resignation, terminations, reserve programs, civilian internal affairs, oversight committee, things like that.
Well, a lot of those don't qualify for executive session.
Well, the reason I put it on there is because if there were any internal complaints, we could discuss it under that. So if it's not conducive for that, then
Okay, I I interpret that as regarding police chief. Right. So I thought it was a complaint against the police chief. But you're for what, from what you're saying is you're wanting to disclose recent personnel items.
What I had done is I had sent an email to Gilbert directly instructing the police chief to provide an update and give me a summary of all the complaints, all the investigations that have been conducted in his department, any reprimands, any type of dismissals, terminations, suspensions within a certain time period. And so I was looking to discuss that with him in the executive session.
Again.
Yeah, I can see what you're saying under the personnel.
Yeah.
So it
And if I may, does that fall under our area or does it, should it go to the city administrator? And then the city administrator brings it to us?
Well, I had given it to the city administrator to instruct the chief to do that and he was supposed to come back with a report regarding those items for our start.
Go ahead, Chief. Where do we go? So I think I touched base with you on it. It's also on the recording, the interaction that we had on September eleventh. But the email that I had from you was no specific timeframe. And I informed you on September eleventh, along in the beginning part of the our conversation, that there was the disciplinary that I presented. There's also another investigation that we're working on. But what happened between you and me pretty much put everything on hold. I had told you that we were eventually gonna get to it. It just put a logjam. I think those were my words that I used. I put a delay in our uh getting your reports and also to Mr. Sines that requested uh the uh dispatch times versus uh cities that had outsourced already to Bear County. So those are two things that I was that I had informed you of as well. So no timeframe, but I just was trying to get you up to date. That day on September eleventh was a more recent.
See, I have the email here and I requested it and then you were calling me. Mayor, we're working on your stuff to respond to you. But I've got a lot of stuff going on with my investigation and some other stuff on the phone. And then I said, no problem. You don't have to have it for the next council meeting. Just as soon as you have an opportunity, then you get to it and and bring it to me. And so um at your earliest convenience, uh basically. And so I had asked for this summary to include documented cause of reason of any officers that resigned, disciplinary action or termination of police officers. Uh any complaints filed by any officer or employee of the police department, dispatch.
Yes, sir.
And provide any friction notice of resignations, notice of complaints filed by anyone against the police officer or employee of the police department from this date on. And um and I asked for it to be provided to myself and the city council, not just myself.
No, sir.
Yeah. And so that was back on August twenty eighth, twenty twenty-four at twelve thirty-nine P M.
Yeah, if you say so. I haven't checked.
Yeah, I'm I'm reading off the email.
Yes, sir.
And so I sent it to Mr. Peralis. He responded back. I'll make sure I get it taken care of. And then the next thing I just got a call from you um a little bit later after that, a week or so.
Yes, sir.
And then you were telling me how busy you were. So
Yes, sir.
I was just trying to get an update on that.
Okay.
And then the same thing I had heard to you when we discussed that day, that you referred to of our of our confrontation in the hallway of the reserve program. Now, let me just find out where are we on that?
Oh, yes, sir.
So do you have an anticipated timeframe that you think you can get it back with us?
With with the request for for that dispatch? I would say that could possibly, I would say probably in the mid October.
Okay, and I think you mentioned the civilian internal affairs program that I had talked about.
Yes, sir, actually.
Oversight committees that you had already.
I've actually asked three.
Training or something. Will you just bring me up to date?
Yeah, three residents that.
That was the purpose of the item. So I think we can satisfy that with whether just, you know, mutual.
One addition to the reserve program. That makes we'll have five.
Okay, sounds good. Okay, that would that will that will have solved.
I see on the agenda that we may not need staff anymore as we go into executive sessions, so I request that they be allowed to go home.
Totally up to the purview of the council. Okay, I'm fine with that. Counsel, is that your wish? That you wanna, do we have a second? Do we need a motion for that or anything? No, just administrative. Okay.
There's nothing on the agenda that requires it to be here after executive session.
Okay, so the time now is nine.
Real quick, before we close.
What's that?
Before we close, real quick, I just want to make sure that the dialogue that just happened on the transferring of information that we follow the existing protocol, that it goes from the chief to the city administrator and then to 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 council.
It was the purview of the council.
I I just want to make sure that we we continue the the process that we have in place to to satisfy the the ordinance that we have in 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 place.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you so much for your concern. I appreciate that. So let's go ahead and go into an executive session. The time is nine forty-four P M.
Can we take a break?
Um let's move right through it if you want. Let's get out of it.
Let's go to break.
Yep, so we can go home. Everybody can get going. Okay, so let me read the captions. Yes, of course. Okay, so the time is nine forty-four. We're gonna go into executive session for item number eighteen, discussion pursuant to section five five one oh seven one. Consultation with attorney pertaining complaints filed, complaints submitted regarding the incident of September eleventh, twenty twenty-four. Lysia, discussion number nineteen, pursuant to section five five one oh seven four, personnel matters regarding administrative complaint investigation regarding employee who falsified a city document, Mayor. Number twenty, discussing pursuant to the section five five one oh seven four, personnel matters regarding complaint uh filed by Councilman Juan Lysia against Mayor Johnny Rodriguez. Uh Lysia, the item number twenty-one does not need to be discussed. We've taken care of that. Item number twenty-two, discussion pursuant section pursuant to section five five one oh seven four, personnel matters regarding complaint filed by Councilman Mark Sines against Mayor Johnny Rodriguez. So let's go ahead and go into the executive session. Thank you, everyone, for being here and have a safe trip if you're going back home, if you're not gonna come back after.